Whenever you're done, George.
All right, we have nothing to report coming out of closed session, so I'll go ahead and adjourn that meeting. And I will call to order the regular meeting of the Elk Grove City Council for Wednesday, July 24th, 2019 at 6:06 PM. And ask that the city clerk read the Metro replay schedule.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, July 26th at 1:00 PM and Sunday, July 28th at 8:00 PM. It is being closed captioned. It will be webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may be necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the city council for more than three minutes. Speaker timer on the podium counts down the individual speaker time remaining and will turn yellow after the first two minutes have passed, indicating one minute remains to summarize comments. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the room, and provide it to the assistant city clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Now would you please have a roll call?
For the roll call, Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Detrick.
Here.
Councilmember Suwen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hume.
Here.
And Mayor Lee is absent.
Very good, thank you. Now Commissioner Murphy, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Be happy to. Please stand. Hand over heart. The pledge, please.
(Inaudible).
We always at the city council begin every meeting with a moment of silence, so please feel free to use this opportunity to reflect on anything of your choosing. Great, thank you. All right, now look for approval of the agenda. So move.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Detrick, second from Councilmember Nguyen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We have an agenda. We have no closed session items. Moving on to Section 4.
That will be our presentations and announcements, starting with item 4.1, which is a proclamation declaring August 2019 as Diversity Awareness Month.
All right, I see we have some members of our newly formed Diversity and Inclusion Commission, if you wouldn't mind coming to the podium. All right, whereas the Diversity and Inclusion Commission will celebrate Elk Grove's diversity with the 8th Annual Multicultural Festival on August 24th, 2019 at Elk Grove Regional Park, whereas the Diversity and Inclusion Commission is charged with providing information, education, and communication that facilitates a better understanding and appreciation for our differences, and wherein the Diversity and Inclusion Commission seeks to increase awareness and education regarding diversity and inclusion beyond the multicultural festival through events, forums, and exchanges throughout the month of August in collaboration with other agencies, businesses, and organizations that promote peace and unity, and whereas the Diversity and Inclusion Commission strives to create a more equitable, accessible, safe, welcoming, and inclusive government in the community of Elk Grove, now therefore be it resolved, the city council and the city of Elk Grove hereby proclaim's the month of August 2019 as Diversity Awareness Month in the city of Elk Grove and encourages all businesses, entities, the media, and Elk Grove citizenry to participate in special events and programs during this designated month, to take the city's diversity pledge, to read the council's 2017 proclamation declaring Elk Grove is no place for hate, and to take time to appreciate the diversity that exists within the city of Elk Grove. So I want to thank all of you for the service that you do for this city, and I each represent your positions with the utmost integrity, and you bring a diversity of thought, a diversity of background, and diversity of perspective to your roles, and I think that the maturation of your commission into a Diversity and Inclusion Commission is one that's been a long time coming, and I know you're all up to the task. So whomever of you would like to say a couple of words, or if you all would. Do the picture first. Yeah, the rest of the council come down.
We have two phones to work right there. Are we ready to kind of squeeze in there? Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Whichever one you want to. Yep.
Honorable Vice Mayor, members of the city council, the city of Elk Grove Diversity and Inclusion Commission profoundly is grateful for all the support that you have offered us. The Diversity Awareness Month is designed to do several things. Number one, it is designed to showcase our richly diverse cultural heritage. It is to educate us about our richly diverse cultural heritage. It affords us an opportunity to honor, to respect, and to appreciate the differences amongst us. I am proud to announce that this year we are organizing an interfaith call to prayer for peace, justice, and unity. Members of our richly diverse faith communities will gather in solidarity to affirm our shared values to advancing the welfare of our entire community. One of the ceremonies that's going to take place on that particular event is a candle-lighting ceremony. This lighting, candle-lighting ceremony will symbolize our commitment to peace, justice, and unity. The event will take place at the Buddhist temple on Calvine Road on Sunday, August the 4th, from 3:00 to 4:30 PM. I hope to see as many of you there. The public is invited. It is open to public. I look forward to working with you and your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, onto item 4.2, please.
That's a presentation on the Sacramento Municipal Utility District Electric Vehicle Programs. I think I'd like to invite up SMUD Board President Rosanna Herbert.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the council. It's a real honor to be here tonight. I tell you, the city of Elk Grove was one of my key accounts when I was a key account manager at SMUD, and with the help of your Public Works Director, Mike Koshawagi, and Bob Lee, the city of Elk Grove became the first city in all of Sacramento County to purchase green energy for its load. And, working with Bob and Mike, we saved hundreds of dollars on your electrical bills. So, I'm here tonight to introduce to you another person who's done great work with your community and I hope will continue to do great work. His name is John Grindrod, and he is one of the project managers for our electric vehicle program. And so I just wanted to say, thank you for your efforts to become green, thank you for your efforts to save energy and to use energy wisely, and I hope that we can be partners as electric vehicles become the norm. And with that, to share with you a little bit about the popularity of electric vehicles in your community is John Grindrod.
Thank you, Rosanna.
Very good, thank you. Vice Mayor Hume and councilmembers, thank you for having us here this evening to do a brief recap of the event, the ride-and-drive event that we held here, right here outside in the parking lot on June 8th of this year. Tremendously successful event, and appreciated. We called it the Elk Grove Tacos and Test Drive EV Ride-and-Drive, so it was all about electric vehicles. As you can see in the photo here, Vice Mayor Hume was there along with Mackenzie Weezer and George Murphy of the Elk Grove Planning Commission, who were instrumental in helping getting this thing kicked off, which is kind of a major, it's a major undertaking, as you can imagine. So let me see if I go the right way. There we go. Before I go into this little bit of the players involved, I'd like to acknowledge a community group. I don't think they have an official name, according to my friend Bill Myers back here, but were really instrumental in helping bring this to the attention of the folks on the planning commission, who also brought it to the city of Elk Grove. They were very helpful and instrumental, but since they didn't have a name, I didn't get them on the list here, but it's a local community group. So these are the major players that were involved in the events. Of course, SMUD Charge Across Town is a company that we contract with to facilitate our ride-and-drive events, and we do about six of them a year. SAC EV is also a local, regional, I should say, electric vehicle, I don't know what to call them, maybe an enthusiast group, they don't like to be called a car club, but they are all EV drivers and they are wonderful about coming out and lending their expertise and experience at events like this. The Center for Sustainable Energy, which is focused on California's Clean Vehicle Rebate Program or Project, which offers a $2,500 rebate, up to $2,500 on the purchase of a new EV. Plug-in America was here. They're a national organization that's focused on EV adoption. Of course, the city of Elk Grove, the Elk Grove Police Department, and Elk Grove Waste Management had booths out here. The Nelo Company with local dealerships in the Elk Grove Auto Mall, Nissan of Elk Grove, of course, right here locally, Maida Toyota, and O'Levo Foods. You know, the thing I like about this slide is that it shows just how much it takes a village to pull this thing off. It was truly a community effort, and SMUD, of course, we consider ourselves very much a community-focused utility. We're here, just in Sacramento County, and so we appreciate all of these organizations, and I want to give thanks to all of them. If anybody's here, thank you for your participation, and for those who aren't, but I want to recognize everyone who was involved. Just by way of a few of the stats from the event, we had 127 unique drivers, so this is 127 individual people that got in and drove vehicles. And keep in mind, this is in a four-hour period, so that's really quite a few people. They averaged, though, more than one vehicle, about 1.67 vehicles experienced per person, so that came out to 212 individual ride-and-drives, almost one per minute, and when I think about it in those terms, that's a lot. We had a bunch of cars here, but we had a bunch of people. Forty-three percent had never driven an EV before, and that really is the heart of why we do these things, because driving an EV is, I like to think of it in terms of what I call an EV lifestyle. When somebody gets in a car and says, "I'm going to drive to New York City today," they never stop and think about, "Where am I going to get gas?" But when you get in an EV, you know, you might think about those kinds of things, and it takes some education, and there's nothing like getting behind the wheel, talking to people who drive the vehicles, experiencing what it feels like, the power of an EV, the luxury, or the practicality of the electric vehicle as a transportation mode. And so forty-three percent, never having had that experience, is exactly what we're after. Thirty-four percent, we saw a thirty-four percent increase. So we do a pre-survey before they drive and a post-survey after they drive, and we saw a thirty-four percent increase in the number of people who said, "I had a very positive impression of electric vehicles now that I've driven one." That's also important, too, because it shows that people are responding to the experience that they had. Councilmember Detrick was also at the event, too, and we talked, and I believe you got to drive one or two vehicles. Did you, or?
No, I actually had another event to go to. I've driven several of the electric vehicles, and, you know, one of my friends has the Tesla S, so it's pretty nice.
Great, but it was great to have you there and see the interest on the city council as well. So, some more event stats. We had SAC EV, and again, they bring their cars, and they just open the doors, and they talk to the public, whoever's there, and they had an additional 174 conversations. Those are deeply meaningful to people because they really get a feel for the experience. Over 50 people attended one of the three EV workshops that we had right here in the council chambers, got educated on them, and we had 11 electric vehicles from local dealers, and also a few SAC EV volunteers gave people rides in their Teslas. But that was really cool, because, you know, several of these dealers were right here, local, and they really turned out with the vehicles, and we kept them busy. And, maybe the most impressive stat, 372 tacos were consumed, so proof positive, right? If you feed them, they will come. Little photo of the setup there. I want to just wrap up with a couple of photos. The EV 101 Workshop, that's a picture of folks in here listening to Eric Cahill, maybe the only person in existence who literally has a PhD in electric vehicle and auto dealers. He did all his research in his dissertation on EV dealers, very knowledgeable, and just shared that knowledge with everybody that came. We also did an induction cooking demo, so you may or may not be familiar with what induction cooking is, but it's a type of electric stove top. It's nothing mysterious, but it's part of our electrification effort, and so what we're trying to do is encourage folks to go all-electric, even in their homes as well, and so to kind of take a little bit of the mystique and demonstrate how that works, we brought out a portable induction cooking demonstration. And the other slide here is just kind of a general photo of the event, of folks waiting in line to take a drive during the whole four hours from 10:00 to 2:00. We had a line, we had people waiting, we had people talking about EVs. We consider this a tremendously successful event, exposed a lot of folks to EVs, and just had a good community event that, it serves as a model for how we like to move forward with other cities in the region. So, thank you again to everybody, all the event partners, and I also wanted to point out that I left up on your desks some of these sheets here. These are just the most popular electric vehicles by sales volume. We update this a couple times a year, and I left some in the back for the audience if they'd like them, along with some of these handy little SMUD giveaways. So thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Can I answer any questions regarding the event?
Yeah. Thank you, Vice Mayor. John, thanks for being here, as well as President Herbert, and Susan, see you back there. I had a great time out there myself. I got to test drive one of the cars, but what I really enjoyed about it was I could test drive so many different, you know, models and makes, right, in one spot, not having to drive to each dealership if I was looking for it. So, my question is, have you spoken to the dealers, are they interested in doing this again? Because I personally would like to see this again. And I know there's a lot of people, when they heard about this, I mean, they didn't know about it, I should say, and I think if we broadcast a little more, it would be successful next year, even more successful.
Absolutely, and I was hoping somebody would ask that. We would love to come back again next year. We look for partnerships. It takes partnerships. You can see all the players that were involved here. We'd love to come back to Elk Grove. We'd love to come down into the South County area. I live in Galt, so it's very nice to be able to draw people up from Galt, people from the South SAC, so yes, and we've talked a little bit already with George and Mackenzie about that, so we'd love to come back again.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Yeah, Councilmember Detrick?
Yeah, John. No, really appreciate you putting together, as we talked, you know, I've got an electric background, so this is right up my alley to see how this has evolved over the, I mean, yearly, the changes that take place in the industry. And I was in Sonoma last weekend, and not only the town of Sonoma, how many people own Teslas, I could not believe, driving back, how many electric vehicles are now on the road. It's pretty amazing. I know a lot of people were skeptical, but it's the real deal. It's here to stay.
It really is, and the awareness is increasing all the time. We do about six of these types of events per year, and we're seeing increased participation, and I think part of that is because we're maybe getting a little bit better about promoting them, that the awareness overall is really rising, and I think exactly what you point to, you see a lot of these on the road. We're trying to take some of the mystique out of it and answer those lifestyle questions. Is this right for me? The average Californian drives like 35 miles a day, so that anecdote story that I gave earlier about driving to New York, I mean, people don't really do that very much, but you can do that in an electric vehicle now, and people are becoming more and more aware of it. This kind of event is exactly what that's designed to do.
I support having it come back as well, so I see George in the audience, and I'm sure that Mackenzie's probably listening, so we'll make sure that they're on it.
Thank you very much for that invitation. We'd very much like to take you up on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, John, and I echo that. I hope George and Mackenzie will, and Bill to a certain extent, will carry the torch again next year. I know I learned a lot, I had a great time. Unfortunately, was only able to drive one of the vehicles that was offered, but the EV workshop particularly, I found very informative and kind of debunked some of the myths that I had preconceived in my head about electric vehicles. The one thing that I might suggest, though, assuming that we have the time and logistical ability, is to broaden the horizon of the types of cars that are offered. I know there are a lot of folks that go to regular hybrids or plug-in hybrids, or, I mean, I think the more that we can, the mystique is having oil-free miles, I get that, but, you know, I would have liked, kind of, as somebody said, to be able to have that at your fingertips and not have to go from dealer to dealer to dealer, so.
Absolutely, that's a great suggestion, and we're all for incorporating more and more vehicles. There's so many now that you can't obviously do them all, but as you point out, the plug-in hybrids, they're great to have here, because that's an important option for folks, too, and we're all for it. The dealers are becoming much more enthusiastic as we've gotten better about putting these events on and drawing big crowds. Obviously, that's a real value for them to be able to participate, so.
Have you heard any feedback from them as to whether they saw an uptick in interest or sales?
You know, buying a car is kind of a long-term thing. I think we can all relate to it, so the average car buyer, they say, spends about six months deciding and researching. We do get some anecdotal feedback from dealers saying that the people do come back and buy cars from them, but sometimes it's hard to make the direct connection, so we really, we don't consider these sales events. We consider them education outreach events. We want to educate, give people the experience, because just like in your mind, you know, you're able to answer those myths, and it's not just you as a car buyer, but it's you talking to your neighbors, "Oh yeah, I drove one of those, and it was really cool," or "It's powerful," or "It's like any other car, it's not a golf cart." I mean, these are powerful cars, it's one of the, you know, they're very responsive, and of course, a lot of people, when they buy a car, that's one of their top priorities. You know, "I want something that'll perform, that'll pass on the freeway, or help me get on the freeway quickly," something that's gutless. So, I guess, I'm not sure if I answered your question. The answer is, yes, we do hear some of that, but we're in it for the long game.
Great. Good, well, thank you.
John, I have one other question. Have you done, obviously, this was a standalone event, have you done any, where you've done a collaboration with a major event and seen any differences? I mean, are your results better in a standalone event, or is the, when you have several thousand people already coming to an event, does that seem to have greater interest or less? We do. We go to the auto show, the Sacramento Auto Show, the Cal Expo, we'll be there this year in October, and of course, you get thousands and thousands of people there only to look at cars, and so they're interested in cars, and we do tend to get some bigger crowds. We were up at Arden Fair Mall a few weeks ago, and of course, we got, you know, some news coverage, and so we get some more people, there's more population in the area, so we can get, you know, larger responses in bigger venues. But what happened here is really a model for us, what we'd like to do, because we do want to go to the big places, but we want to reach all of SMUD territory. We really do feel like we're a community organization, so coming here, this was great. We're here at City Hall. We might find other venues right here within Elk Grove where there's more natural traffic. We do look for that, but, you know, this is a little off the beaten path in terms of people on a Saturday, right? They're not coming to City Hall, but they did, because it was well-promoted through the, I want to say, the utility bills with the city. So, yeah, there could be some room for improvement, and we'll talk about that, but this was, yeah, we, this, let me just say this, a couple of years ago, we did an event here in Elk Grove. It was at the Nugget Market, and we had around 90 to 100 ride-and-drives, and we considered that pretty successful, too, so there was 127 here, you know, I mean, that's 25, 30% improvement, so it's really, really solid.
Okay, thank you. Sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rosanna. Nice to see you. All right, moving on to item number five, public comment. This is for items that are not on the agenda, anybody that wishes to address the city council on a non-agendized item, just ask to fill out a speaker card so I can call you up. First up is Keith Smothers. Following Keith will be Lynn Wheat.
I would like to take this opportunity to extend a huge thank you to the city. Councilperson Nguyen, Shane Diller, helped my community, who has been tackling a big item for the last several years. It involved working with a local school, and we've been attempting to resolve this issue at what I call the lowest level, and we've been doing it for the last several years with no traction, and it's been a problem that has been impacting our community significantly. And so finally, you know, I made my final statement, and I contacted Ms. Nguyen as well as Shane, and said, "We need your help." And they came to our attention, and today I received notice by the superintendent of the district that your issue is resolved, and at least for the upcoming year, and it's going to give us time to work on a long-term solution. And I am just grateful, you know, for anyone that says that the Elk Grove City doesn't work with its citizens, doesn't understand the Elk Grove City, and I'm very grateful and I appreciate everything each one of you have done, and I'm not even sure if you, I don't know the other players that may have had a hand in it, but to everybody that did, thank you. But I also want to extend a thank you to Councilperson Nguyen for showing up at our Fourth of July Freedom Party, and the Powell family would like to extend a thank you for showing to our party. We had approximately 80 to 100 participants, and we had a great time, and we had a very nice showing, and Ms. Nguyen showing at our event added an additional boost that everybody enjoyed, and so I just wanted to say thank you tonight, and I appreciate everything you do for us. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, and I want to thank you as well, too, for your patience and all this. I know that it was an ongoing battle, but it wasn't just me. I did rely on my colleagues here and asked them for support on what I should do, and they helped guide me into the right direction. So, it wasn't just all me. It was definitely a team effort. But Shane, Mr. Diller back there, my goodness, I can't say enough about how he is just amazing. I mean, he would respond Saturdays, Sundays, midnights, and every time there was an issue, I would include him, and he was on it. And so, you know, we want to thank you, because this is what it's all about, is working with us and being patient, because especially when it was just, just wasn't the city, we had to work with the school district as well, too. And thank you for the invitation. I really enjoyed it. That neighborhood did such an amazing job on posting flags on every single lawn and coming out and having all the children out there, and I was very fortunate to be able to bring my two little girls as well, too, and they really enjoyed it. So, thank you for the invitation. I know the chief and I tried to get some officers out there, and I don't think we were going to make it because it was a really busy night, but we look forward to being a part of that next year.
The invitation's going to be extended next year, so watch your mailbox.
Thank you.
All right.
Keith, before you take off, you know, one thing I got to applaud you on is you've come to us with some controversial items, but you've always done it with respect, and the way you come up makes it a lot easier to absorb your information in a positive way. And a lot of people are very, very quick to criticize, but you're here tonight to give us some praise, which is very unusual, and really, really appreciated. Thank you for taking the time to do that.
Well, thank you. It goes both ways. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you. See you, Keith. Okay, next up is Lynn Wheat, and following Ms. Wheat will be Mr. Manaski.
I am here tonight, and I am not going to criticize, actually. So, I do come when I see something good and say something positive. I did like how we offered the electric cars in that demonstration, and definitely believe that we ought to look at conserving our energy in any way possible. So, my little sales spiel is for years, and even growing up, for another reason, we use solar power to dry our clothes, and that's just a clothesline. And they're very easy to get. You get a little exercise, and in our summer heat, things dry pretty quickly. If you're working and out of town, you can get up a little bit early, hang them up, and then they'll be all dry when you get home. But that's not what I really want to talk about tonight. I've been noticing on Nextdoor Neighbor that there's some concerns about our affordable housing projects that are going in, and the years I've been here for 19, it becomes a NIMBY issue. So, we have our general plan here, and I really want to commend staff who looks at, in particular Sarah Bone Trager, in trying to address our issues of affordable housing and homelessness. I earlier this year brought up the suggestion that we look at tiny homes, and I can tell and I know that you as elected officials received a lot of very negative feedback towards that. I am not in an elected position, and Nextdoor Neighbor, I was pretty much reamed. So, I do know how that feels, but I look at Elk Grove as one big backyard for me. And when we were working on the general plan, I suggested that we look at inclusionary housing. And the reason I suggested that was then we don't isolate our different economic levels, and we mix up our neighborhoods, and some of the older neighborhoods have actually done that, but that was long before we became a city, when they integrated duplexes within the neighborhoods. We even have smaller apartment complexes within the neighborhoods. So, I'd say decades ago, they understood that we needed to blend the communities. However, it hasn't been popular with our development, home builders in our development communities, so they find it much easier to pay fees. And then we are stuck as residents and you as our elected officials to try to place them somewhere. And that, how unfortunate that is, because then our lower income, who actually do have jobs, are given a bad rap. But when we isolate, and when we build big, huge complexes, or we have a complex that comes looking like what's at the Civic Center, which some have referred to as the barracks or Russia, and that's right near our Civic Center, that is where we all hurt. And so, because it wasn't implemented in our general plan update and the adopted plan as it was adopted, I hope that there's a good portion in our community that as some policies have been changed in the past, and zoning code and updates, that there will be more individuals that will get up and say, "We want blended communities for all. We all deserve that." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Michael Manaski, and Mr. Manaski's is the last speaker card that I have. Again, this is for non-agendized items.
The U.S. Constitution's preamble includes provision for the common defense and promotion of the general welfare. What is the general welfare? In some ways, we can look at what it isn't. It's not the neoliberal bias that this council has. Neoliberal bias is a countervailing effect to the general welfare. As was noted by Ms. Wheat, housing is a great need that is unmet in this community. Neoliberal bias that works against, as a countervailing effect against, the general welfare is privatization. And the city, planning, engineering, waste disposal, and until recently, the bus system are all privatized. There is no, austerity is a second element in neoliberal bias. There are no guaranteed wages or benefits for people who work here for large corporations. Market priorities that set aside human needs with profits. When we have blind and blindly have applied planning without benefit of adequate market studies, for example, the mall and the hospitals here. And finally, deregulation of powerful entities and regulation of small powerless entities. We have code enforcement penalties for residents, but instead, we have Costco subsidies, and another great example is Pacific Gas and Electric, when in 2011, it deregulated utility pole replacements from every 50 years to every 775 years. This does not, these kinds of policies do not promote the general welfare. It was stated by the SMED representative, "If you feed them tacos, they will come. Well, if they're already here, will we accommodate them?" This is an ethics lesson that I hope that we can have an ongoing discussion about. All of you are responsible for taking ethics courses in order to stay in office, and all your appointees are also required to do the same. Any professional license that you have, you're required to, you're required to take an ethics course usually. And so, I want you to take these words seriously.
Thank you, Michael. Anybody else wishing to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing nobody come forward, I'll go ahead and close. Public comment for items not on the agenda, and move on to item number six, general administration information.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. A few items to report on. First is some good news, some recognition for the City of Elk Grove and its Public Works Department capital improvement projects. We had four projects that were awarded Project of the Year by the American Public Works Association Sacramento Chapter. The awards are for public works projects that demonstrate excellent management, administration, design, sustainability, construction, and community relations, as well as a strong alliance among the managing agency and the designer contractor construction management teams. Awards will be presented on August 2nd for the following projects. Lower Laguna Creek Open Space Preserve Trail in the Parks and Trails category, $500,000 to $2 million. Waterman Road Rehabilitation and Bike Lanes Project, Transportation category, $500,000 to $2 million. Sheldon and Bradshaw Roundabout, Transportation category, $2 million to $10 million. And the Bilby Road and Big Horn Boulevard Extension Project, Transportation category, $10 million to $50 million category. We're proud of our Public Works Department, all the city staff involved in that project. Coming up this weekend is the 32nd Annual Strauss Festival, beginning on Thursday with nightly performances scheduled throughout the weekend. Special check presentation by the City Council is scheduled on Friday evening as part of the city's event sponsorship. Promenade begins at 7:30, and the show begins at 8:15. Parking is $10. For more information, visit straußfestival.com. We had a presentation this evening on our Diversity Awareness Month. There's a variety of activities coming up through the month of August. We encourage everybody to participate in. These include a free kite-making workshop for kids, interfaith prayer event that was mentioned for peace, justice, and unity. Festivities will also culminate in the city's largest cultural celebration, the 8th Annual Elk Grove Multicultural Festival at Elk Grove Park on Saturday, August 24th. We also have National Night Out coming up. Police Department and Consumer and Fire Department will join responders in cities throughout the country next Tuesday, August 6th, in recognizing National Night Out as, actually a week from next Tuesday, as a way to strengthen neighborhoods and prevent crime. Officers will visit gatherings scheduled throughout the city. For a listing of scheduled National Night Out events in the city, contact the Crime Prevention Unit for the city. City and Town Planner calendar are hosting a photo contest on Instagram. Submit your best shot taken with the city using the hashtag #EGTownPlanner20 by August 18th. See official contest rules and details on the city's website. And finally, the city is seeking nominations for its 2019 Accessibility Awards. Awards are due on Friday, August 2nd. Nominations are open to businesses, organizations, and individuals who go above and beyond for individuals with disabilities in Elk Grove. Nominations are being accepted on the city's website. I'm happy to answer. Any questions that the council might have?
Very good. Any questions for the city manager? No? Thank you, Jason. Appreciate it. All right, on to council comments, reports, and future agenda items, starting at the end there with Councilmember Nguyen.
Thank you, sir. I had the opportunity to attend the SAC Regional Transit Board Workshop where RT staff gave an overview of their goals, accomplishments, and initiatives. This morning, I attended the Regional Diversity Community Meeting, which is really the fire department, and working with them on presenting our Links to Law Enforcement program and how we can work with them to diversify the fire department as well, too. I have Sacramento Air Quality Meeting tomorrow and Library Authority, and then I wanted to ask if I can get support on having somebody from the district attorney's office come in to present about an app that they created on connecting young people with government agencies, community-based organizations, and resources. We have the largest school district here, and while we're not the school board, we do come across a lot of young people, especially as I see they're always here at our council meeting. We have the Youth Commission, the Civic Summer, but basically, it's an app that the district attorney's office created where they connect with young people through outreach, education, intervention to create a stronger and healthier community. It's definitely promoted in Sacramento, but because this is a county thing, we want to try to push it here in our city as well, too, and I think it would benefit all of us to learn more about this app and to hopefully get a lot of our youth to not only install it on their phone, but utilize it as well, too.
I'll support that.
Great, thank you. Do I have, sir?
All right, thank you. Councilmember Dedrick?
I have nothing to report, and I'll let you guys talk about the social events that we were jointly at.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. It's summer, so our SAC board meeting was on recess last week, and Library Authority is tomorrow. I just want to take a quick moment to congratulate Public Works and Bob and your team on the award from APWA. This is fantastic. Thanks.
All right. I did not make the RT workshop that Councilmember Nguyen referenced, but I did attend the Chicks in Crisis fundraiser last Saturday. It was a good turnout for them. And then, last night was at the Cammerer Park dedication ceremony. Amazing turnout, and I think one of the most impressive things was there's probably about 75 to 100 representatives there from the Cammerer family or descendants of the Cammerer family, and they actually had a family tree, starting with the original four pioneering settlements. And so, it was an amazing turnout. I mean, what a great thing for them to get together and use that for the opportunity for a reunion. Then we had a sandboard meeting this morning that unfortunately, we were not able to muster a quorum, and so, we heard a couple of reports and had to adjourn the meeting early. And then, with respect to future agenda items, it's not a future agenda item, but without a vehicle, and so, I actually took the bus to meet Henry Lee for lunch the other day, and I walked farther than I needed to in order to get to a bus stop that was called out as having a shelter, and said it had an Old Town Shelter. And I got there, and the strangest thing, at Park Meadows and Elk Grove Floor and Road, the shelter and bench are on the south side of Park Meadows, and the sign and the actual bus stop are on the north side of Park Meadows. So, do we have it within our CIP, or can we figure out a way to pour some concrete and move those assets from the south side of the road to the north side of the road so that it all matches up?
We'll find a way.
Okay, thank you. I would have hate to, you know, at hourly frequency, you get a little anxiety attack that you want to be out there early in case the bus is early, and, you know, I wanted to have a bench to sit down, and I realized I'm sitting not at the bus stop, and the bus could just blow by me. A little more anxiety, so needless to say, hoping we can fix that. But that's all I have. Thank you. And now, we'll move on to consent calendar items.
With consent?
I do have somebody from the public signed up to speak, so I'll go ahead and accept that motion, but I'll hold, I'll take the second as well, and then we'll go ahead and hear a public comment from Lynn Wheat on item 8.9.
So, I want to just compliment Public Works for all the great job they're doing, and I'm working on getting them the $2 million so we can get our potholes filled, because I'd really like to see that happening in our town. But I also wanted to speak to 8.8 briefly. I'd really like this to be something that is discussed. It's the annual growth report, and it shares a lot of important information about what's going on in our city, some of the accomplishments, some of the projects that have been completed, where we stand as far as the number of housing units we're building per businesses. And I can see that we are definitely building a lot more homes than we previously have, but I'm not seeing the businesses and the commercials increasing that much. I'm seeing more retail, which makes sense, because homes need, you know, places to shop for groceries, et cetera, like our Costco. But I really would like that sometime to be where we have a discussion instead of hiding in under consent. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent calendar passes. On to our public hearing items, item 9.1.
9.1 is a public hearing to consider resolution, approving the supplemental mitigated negative declaration, adopting the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Railroad Street Improvements Project and approving the project.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Kristen Parsons. I'm a senior civil engineer with the Capital Improvement Program, and I am here to present this item to you tonight. The item before you tonight is asking for you to adopt the supplemental ISMND, Initial Study Mitigated Negative Declaration for the Railroad Street Project, adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and to approve the project. These slides give you an idea where the project is located. On the left, it shows we're in Old Town on the east side of town, just east of the Union Pacific Railroad tracks. The limits of the area included in the ISMND start along Railroad Street at Elk Grove Boulevard, extends down Railroad Street to the unnamed channel. It includes the Old Town Plaza parcel, the two parking lots that are currently dirt, unimproved along there. It also includes improvements on Grove Street along the frontage to Old Town Plaza. Currently, we're working on design. Typically, we work on the environmental document during the 35 and 65% phases of design on the project. In the early stages, we need to define what the limits of the project will be, what the scope will be, get the environmental document done, and then we continue through the final phase. design stages. So we are still in design. We're making refinements to the design at this point. We're gathering additional information right now. We're continuing to work with stakeholders. I had a meeting today with one of the residents along Railroad Street that asked me to mention in my presentation, Denise Walker, that we had met today. She felt that the meeting was very helpful, so she asked that I would mention that specifically. And she's here to speak tonight. This slide gives a depiction of the proposed Railroad Street improvements. So you can see the black depicts where the roadway alignments will be and the drive aisles and parking spaces. The intent of the project is to create a space that will be welcoming and inviting. We're trying to improve circulation and access to the area for both pedestrians, bicyclists, as well as vehicles. And we need to provide the necessary improvements for future development. That would include Phases Two and Phase Three of the Old Town Plaza improvements, as well as proposals and potential proposals to redevelop the existing brick buildings on the west side of Railroad Street, between Railroad Street and the railroad tracks. This project will correct existing drainage issues that we have out there, deficiencies in the pavement. It will provide accessible paths of travel. It will include undergrounding of overhead utilities along the southern portion of Railroad Street. Will provide much-needed additional parking to the area, and will provide two-way access along here while still preserving the existing buildings that are out there. It's quite tight out there, trying to get everything to fit, but we've been able to work out a design that does not impact the building, the existing building structures that are out there. Included in this project, both on Old Town Plaza and along Railroad Street, are many new trees. So this image here shows Old Town Plaza, and we've got 15 new trees going in along on that parcel, most of them closer to the Railroad Street side. In addition to those 15 trees, we have 67 more trees on Railroad Street. This slide actually doesn't depict all of the 67 trees. This was an earlier schematic drawing that we had. The current drawings that are up to date that I have are engineering-type drawings. They're more difficult to read. They're not colorful. They don't stand out. They don't give the picture as well. So imagine there are, I believe, nine additional trees that are not shown on this plan that would be added. And these are the types of trees that are going to be included. We are planning to plant the, on the bottom left, Zelkova Serata tree. We have 17 of the saw-leaf Zelkova trees going in. The Western Redbud multitrunks, these give us some color out there. We have 30 of those planned. The Coast Live Oak multitrunk trees. We have a lot of oak trees out there now. We're adding more oak trees out there. We have 31 of those planned to go in with the projects. And we have four of the Princeton Century Ginkgos. Those four trees are along the Old Town Plaza parcel. So, community outreach. We've done a lot of it. We started in 2012 when the city purchased the property. Very quickly, we got into land use planning workshops and working with outside agencies to help us determine what the best use of the land was. We've had pop-up workshops and mail-in surveys that have been done. We've had meetings with stakeholders. You can see in the box to the right, those are all of the various committees that we've met with, that we've gathered feedback from residents, business owners, city commissions, and developers. We've taken all of that, and we've come back to you a couple of times. We received direction in 2015, in June of 2015. We received additional direction in December of 2015. Planning Commission saw the project in December of 2016. And in January of 2017, we adopted an initial study mitigated negative declaration for this area. At that point, we started design of the Railroad Street improvements. That was in the summer of 2018. With that, it became obvious that we needed to expand the area to the south to include roadway improvements south of where the proposed parking lots are. Because of that, we had to do a supplemental ISMND. So that's why we're here for you tonight, is to present that supplemental ISMND and ask you to adopt that. So we continued our outreach. Design started. We went to the Disability Advisory Committee and received feedback. Typically, for SEQA, the document is available for public review and comment for 30 days. We circulated this one for almost 60 days. We gave some additional time. We also typically notify a 500-foot radius. We notified 1,320-foot, or a quarter-mile radius for this. So we tried to get the word out around town. We held a joint open house in May, and we presented the Old Town Plaza Project, the Railroad Street Improvements Project, and the Phase Two of the Streetscape Project on Elk Grove Boulevard. And that pretty much brings us to where we are tonight with the SEQA public hearing. We've continued our outreach. We've been meeting with residents and other stakeholders in the area. We'll continue to do that as we refine the design. It won't stop here. So, in summary, we have, with mitigation, been able to reduce all potentially significant impacts to less-than-significant or no impact. I've listed here some of the ones that have mitigation included in the document for you to summarize them. In addition, we will have environmental pre-construction surveys and awareness training required as part of the project. And as I mentioned, we anticipate onsite planting of trees. So we have received public comments during the public comment period. They are, all comments received during the public comment period are addressed in our response to comment in the document. I've summarized here what many of the concerns have been: existing traffic and pollution from trains, passenger rail platform that was requested, access during construction, air and noise impacts, parking, questions about what the proposed landscape would be, questions about historic and cultural preservation, and tree removal. So I've talked about the trees that we're planting, the 82 trees that we're adding to the project. We do have 23 trees that could be impacted by the project. As I said, we're still refining the design. We're working on an Arborist report. We don't have that yet. Once we get that information, it'll give us a little more definition as to what the existing health of those trees is, and whether any of the impacts can be reduced by modifying improvements on the project. In addition, there are approximately 30 other trees in the project area that are not in the residential backyards along Railroad Street that are also going, they're not being affected by this project. They will remain. And then there are the trees that are along Railroad Street but on the residential side of the sound wall along there. We're not impacting trees on private property. The trees, actually, if I go back one, you can sort of see here that the trees come in clusters. So we have two trees up by the Old Town Plaza site. We have numbers one and two here. We have two trees by parking lot one, the smaller parking lot. Then we have a grouping of trees further down, another grouping of trees, and then a couple of trees at the end of the project. So I've taken some pictures that we had collected, so showing the sound wall and the trees along it. These are the existing trees. In the top left here, those are the two trees that are adjacent to the smaller parking The next steps. So after tonight, once you adopt the ISMND, we will move into the Federal Environmental Clearance, or the NEPA phase of the project. Our intent is to advertise this project for construction in January, and that would mean we should be able to start construction in spring of 2020, likely in April. And construction would be complete in the fall of 2020. So that's the timing for the project. Our recommendations tonight are that you adopt the supplemental ISMND, you adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and you approve the project. So thank you for your time. That concludes my presentation, but I'm happy to answer questions that you may have.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Kristen? Yeah, Councilmember Dedrick.
Yeah, thank you for meeting with the residents. And I know with all the public hearings, obviously Denise is in the audience. When you met out there, so are you waiting on the Arborist report to see what may or may not be feasible to incorporate the master landscape plan and the existing facilities, existing trees?
That's correct. That will help us have the information that we need to make an informed decision as to whether or not we can make modifications to what's proposed now and realistically be able to leave other trees there.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Great. Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I will declare the public hearing open, open the public comment opportunity. I do have some folks signed up to speak, starting with Ms. Denise Walker, Ms. DC. And following Ms. Walker will be Michael Menosky.
Denise, while you're walking up, thank you for sending the pictures.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you for looking at the pictures. What I wanted to talk about is those trees do impact a lot of the neighbors around there. I have tried so many times to grow trees in my backyard. Unfortunately, I had the infamous swimming pool next door that has killed a few of my trees, and all of you are fairly aware of what pool I'm talking about. We have a wind tunnel that comes through there in the wintertime. Last year, I had two smud trees back there, and the wind snapped both of them in half. The year before, I had three trees back there that were all blown over completely. So I've tried so many times to plant trees in my backyard, because yes, I would love the shade. Every summer, I try to get creative to try to shade my backyard, because our backyards do face the west, which is, you know, late afternoon sun. I was shocked when Channel 3 showed up at my door last night wanting an interview, and she was shocked at how much shade the trees provided our backyards. Which brings me to smud. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous. I'm not used to this, even though I know all of you personally are not used to it. Smud raise their rates, and they have the peak hours now, where they want us to reduce energy use between 5:00 and 8:00, which, as you all know, is the hottest part of the day. By removing those trees, that's going to negatively affect all of us in that neighborhood and have us create more energy, use more energy, to cool our homes. I've lived in my neighborhood for 26 years. I bought my home 26 years ago. When I bought my home, there were no, oh, and that's another thing I want to bring up is the traffic light. I'm sure you guys have heard quite a bit about the traffic light. When I bought my home 26 years ago, it was before we became a city, and there were no homes east of Waterman Road, just a few scattered farms here and there. Since then, all those thousands and thousands of homes have been put in, and it makes it almost impossible sometimes to get out of my neighborhood. I was almost late tonight, because I couldn't get out of the neighborhood. There's too much traffic. And for years, I've been told, oh, we're doing the study. We're doing the study. And I just now found out, you're just now doing a study. So that's another thing that would really help the neighbors in that neighborhood, is a traffic light. But I really do hope that you listen to everything and take into consideration, those trees do help a lot of us. I'm sure all of you, most of you remember the infamous garage door backyards on Stockton Boulevard years and years ago, and I would hate to see that happen in my neighborhood, because, oops, because I just found out we are responsible for that sound wall back there, which is crumbling and which is ugly-looking. And most of those people around there, they can't afford to replace a wall. They're going to put up garage doors like we did years and years, well, the people did years ago on Stockton Boulevard. And thank you for taking time out to hear me.
Thank you, Denise. Following Denise, Michael Menosky. And following Mr. Menosky is Chris Fellerson.
The, Ms. Parsons indicated, the staff member indicated, that the city's still working on a design for this project, and I beg to differ. I think you've already got an idea of what you want to do there. And what it has to do with is selling that property or renting it out to a developer to develop the winemaker district, those old buildings. And what these parking lots are going to be for are essentially gratis than the real reason for developing the parking lots in the first place. That's over 200 parking spaces in there. Meetings with the Historic Preservation Committee in February through April 2015. I just attended the last meeting of the Historic Preservation Committee, and most of them denied knowing about this particular project. That's the members of your appointed committee. There are no traffic studies in this ISMND. I think an EIR should be done, because this is going to adversely affect traffic in the area. There's no mention of park amenities, including any kind of meadow, swales, or child recreation, other than the swales for the parking lots, which people aren't going to play in. And there's no mention of the use of U.S. Housing and Urban Development funding for this project, including the building of these parking spaces. The, on the site, the pedestrian crossing at the railroad is in very poor condition. Even though it's been improved for cars, it's not good for pedestrians. There are no bike amenities, and the bike amenities are, will be, bicycling amenities will be, take, parking will take precedence over that. There's, the spur is still an unresolved, the disposition of the historic spur is still unresolved. Again, there's no kid swings, rides, or play space. There's no softscape, no buffer between the park and the railroad. And right now, there's a lot of use of cyclone fencing, and I don't know that that won't be the case when this, the use of this pavilion will be privatized. It's been used a lot as a paid venue. It's, the plans here do not define the use as a free public space. Who controls the public park uses? The merchants or the public? And finally, traffic. Use as a passenger train station was completely ignored in this study. Congestion is probably going to increase because of the use of those parking spaces, and will create automobile bottlenecks. And again, this study ignores the site's historic role as a multi, historic role as a multimodal facility. There's, there are pictures of a platform and a train station at this site, and there's no plan for that. Right, and I'll just close by saying, Amtrak goes northbound twice a day, every day, and southbound twice a day, every day, at that site. You cannot get on a train. You cannot get off a train. And this is an opportunity for us to use that site as a multimodal facility now, if we just put in a platform. We don't have to put in a huge platform. We could modify it. The quotation I got on a price for building a platform was 1,000 feet and $3.5 million. I don't think you need anything like that. Again, this discussion has not occurred with the Historic Preservation Committee, at least not the current one. And if you're going to count public input from And if you're going to count public input from four years ago, and again, the staff is saying they're still working on the design, this is not a transparent process.
Thank you.
So I'm, I'm really upset about it.
Thank you. And I can only tell you that to build a platform, train platform there, you would only be able to use it now because within the next three years, passenger rail service will move off of that subdivision over onto the subdivision that's over to the west side of town. That's a decision because Amtrak said they had no further capacity on that line.
Right. They don't, but they still, but they use it now.
Your comments have been received.
I want an opportunity to answer that.
There's no answer to that. I just gave you information that you're, you're not speaking about.
No, no, that's the San Joaquin Joint Powers Agency that's overseeing that. And we have very little say in that, and there's been no discussion about that, Mr. Hume, no discussion whatsoever with the city of Elk Grove or the people of Elk Grove.
That's patently false, and we don't have a discussion. Amtrak has said that there's no availability for, for growing capacity on that line, so therefore, it's going to move over to the other line. And we will be looking at building a platform on the other line. But to throw money over there would literally be a waste of funds.
Oh, you're going to build a platform in the city of Elk Grove?
It's not slated to be in the city of Elk Grove.
That's right, it's not slated to be in the city of Elk Grove. But right now, well, the argument, you, you brought it up.
We're off-topic, sir.
No, no, we're not off-topic.
We are off-topic.
No, we're not. This is a project.
Michael, please sit down.
No, this is a project.
Please, sit down.
No, no, I will not sit down. I want to answer your complaint that we're going to have this in the future. A burden on hand is worth two in the bush, Mr. Hume. And every day, I live in that area, and I've got notifications each time this happened.
Michael, you're spending millions of dollars on something that's going to be outdated and worthless within the next two years.
No, that's not what I said.
That's exactly what you're saying.
No, that's not what, no, that's not what I said. Your staff report, actually, it wasn't in the staff report because I had to ask for extra information, okay? And the, and what, what.
What you said was that there was no consideration of a train platform.
Mr. Bucy, let me finish. Mr. Bucy said that it would cost $3.5 million to build a 1,000-foot-long, you know, platform. I don't know that we necessarily need a 1,000-foot platform.
A thousand feet, 10 feet, it doesn't matter, the train's not going to be there.
The train is there. And, and, and again, that's not true. The train goes there four times a day.
Four now.
Now.
Four now.
You know, earlier, I said, you know, if you give them free tacos, they will come, right? Remember, you heard that?
I heard that.
Earlier, yeah. The people are already coming here every day, okay? It's just that they can't stop there, and they can't get on there.
Okay.
That's the problem. And you don't listen. Ethically, you have a responsibility to listen.
Don't lecture me about ethics.
No, yes, I will.
No, you won't.
I will lecture you, yes, I will.
No, you won't.
Yes, I will. Because you are imposing a privatized, a party, private party pavilion over there instead of, and, and parking for a development that has not been linked to this yet. That's why I'm so angry at the way you're treating me now. That's wrong. That's wrong. This is my city, okay? I don't care if you don't think it's your city, or you think that, you know, five miles away, there's going to be a, a, a public multimodal facility in another city that's going to serve us. We are facing climate catastrophe. We are in the zero decade of that. And your statements indicate your ignorance of that.
Mr. Fellerson, you're up. Following Chris Fellerson is Sue Valeas.
I've been in contact with, I've gone to the hearings, or the, the open house that was had on the different projects in May. My concern is we own Pacific Modern Homes, and we have the six acres at the bottom of Railroad Street. So Railroad Street ends in our property, and we're right next to the Elk Grove Water District, Railroad Street Treatment Plant. I'm aware that the Water District has negotiated with the city and a 24-hour, three, you know, 365, you know, seven days a week, 365 days a year access guarantee to their plant on Railroad Street via Railroad Street and via Grove Street. The concern I have is that I was notified in late June by Sarah Williams that your content, that the work on Railroad Street improvements is contemplating shutting Railroad Street down for as much as two to three weeks. That's our access. She started with presenting a possible right-of-way situation, going through a Ms. Matney's property, which is overfronting Kent Street, where we already have a right-of-way, but it's unimproved. We can use it, sort of, but it's never been improved, and we've, you know, we only tried it during the Elk Grove Boulevard rework in the mid, in the early 2000s. If, you know, and the comments from the letter that was written by the general manager of the Water District, reminding the city of, that they need that, that the Water District has that agreement with the city. And the comment from the, that was addressed back to them for their letter, said there, the city is guaranteeing that. As long as you've got that for them, and we can still get out with our trucks and, and things, I'm fine, and I don't object to the project at all. But if you're, if you're going to close it down, and now, you know, you're talking about springtime, but your, your website still says that the project was going to be starting construction possibly in, at late October, which is rainy season, which there's no way we're going to get out on that unimproved right-of-way. So, I'm, we would like to make sure that Railroad Street, you know, is not impeded during this construction project. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Sue Valeas, and following Sue is Randy Becker.
I just wanted to come and talk about the trees that are supposed to be cut down in that area. I live in that area. I am not on Jan, Jan Marie, but I wanted to support those, those people that do live there. I live on Mardel, and I've lived there before the city became a city. So I've lived there for a number of years. And I basically wanted to say that I would think that the city would want to improve those trees rather than take them down. I would think that they would like to prune them. I think that would be an, an admirable thing to do rather than just cut them down for those, for those people in that area. I understand that they're shading their, their properties, and I think that's wonderful because big trees like that are wonderful. I have one in my front yard. So, anyway, I wanted to say something about the trees, but I also wanted to come and say how important it is because I've, I've been coming down Railroad Street and turn on Grove so many times, and there's not enough room for two cars. And there hasn't been for a long time, nor has there been any area where, where pedestrians can walk at the same time. And I walk, walk there all the time. And that, to me, is so, so much needed so that people do not get hurt. So, basically, that's why I wanted to come.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Becker. Randy's is the last slip I have on this item.
Vice Mayor, Council. Over the last two days, working with Kristin and Kevin, I think they, as well as the residents, have gotten a little better understanding and a common goal, as I reached out to a couple of you to bring awareness, because I really didn't know where this was going. I think after the Arborist does their bit, and the community convenes back with the city as far as having conversations, hopefully, we'll have a better idea. I think it's important, going back to where we lost all the trees along Elk Grove Boulevard, there's a bad taste in, in the mouth of those of us that lived here. So losing a mature tree is important. I don't live there, but I've seen the pictures, as you guys have, and it, it would be a shame if they had to come down. But along with coming down, that happening, as I brought up to, to both of them, is the deterioration of that wall or fence. And who's responsible for that? You know, there's ventures, I think, everyone that I've talked to seems to want the, the parking areas, the parking lots, see the improvement. But we need to do it in a way that's, that's a plus for everyone. It is tight back there when, you know, I taped it off today. It's pretty tight back there from the first brick building all the way back. I don't know if everything that can be done, but I think that as long as the city is willing to have conversation, and the citizens in the community have an open mind, I think we can probably come up with something that works. That's my hope. They made me aware that the, that the completion should be in the latter part of 2020. Those parking lots are going to create more vehicles on that side that people are going to have to egress down Grove Street. That means in 2020 or 2021, we need to have that light at Kent Street. I don't care where the funding comes from, it doesn't, from a citizen's standpoint, that's up to you folks where it comes from. But Kent Street Light has to be there. You know, it's unfortunate that this community has had to endure what other parts of the community has a safe net out and in. This community has a safe net in, but not a safe net out, nowhere. They can't even go up to Waterman and turn left safely because there's no light compared to the north side of Elk Grove Boulevard. Lastly, I think the long-term goal of, of the city of Elk Grove in that area is to look at Railroad Street and see in the future, and I'm looking at a crystal ball, that, to tie into Dino Drive, if that was to ever be feasible. But I think long-term, that's something the city ought to probably look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Okay, I didn't receive any other speaker cards for people to speak on this item, so we'll go ahead and close the public comment opportunity, declare the public hearing closed, and go to council deliberation and direction. I'll start to my left this time.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I appreciate all the comments that we heard tonight. You know, anytime you're dealing with removing, potentially removing mature trees, I, I think there's, there's definitely a, a felt, there's definitely sympathy in that because not only, you know, we're talking the canopies, but we're talking about the amount of time that it's taken for that tree to get to that, be that size. And nobody, nobody up here likes it, I promise you that. I've seen trees that, you know, folks may remember, there was a beautiful, big oak tree on Bond and Elk Grove Florin Road. And, right, you remember that one? And it was preserved for a long time. And when that, when that road came in, they widened Bond Road there, and eventually, it died. And that's, you know, unfortunately, that's the sad part, you know, when, when construction and things, things like that happen, you know, we try to make way for, you know, lack of a better term, progress. We affected the root system, which in turn affected the health of the tree. And so here we are again, faced with this, this kind of situation. And so the, the MMRP, the mitigation, monitoring, reporting program is, you know, is intended to minimize that effect. That's why you see such a large ratio, I think it was 3.6 trees per existing tree to, to plant in order to try to make up for that. And it, it doesn't make up for the time that was already spent. Now, maybe we can look at planting even bigger trees, but, you know, something that, that would try to help. But I, I know it, it doesn't, it's a little consolation, I, I really understand that. I would say, or ask the council to support this and that. Let's continue to have staff work with, with these residents and find, try to find a way to, to do what we can, you know, preservation if possible, and, you know, any other solutions that, that we can work out. I also want to mention the gentleman about seeing Railroad Street not impeded. I hope staff could take note of that and, and work with, with the residents there as well. Having said all that, I, I would move staff's recommendation on, on this. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Second, but I think councilmember wanted to make some comments.
Go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm fine. He actually said everything I wanted to say too, so.
Well, I think Kristin, I think Kristin already addressed the issue with the trees waiting on the Arborist and working with the city, I, I mean, working with the residents, I agree 100% with that. The issue got brought up about bikes. Is there any design for bike racks or anything like that in this project?
Yes, we do have two areas on Old Town Plaza, one along Elk Grove Boulevard and one along Railroad Street, that will both have bike racks added.
Okay. And then, the, I know that there, Randy brought up the issue of punching Railroad through. I know that was a discussion in our briefing, that that's something that the city's looking at feasibility sometime in the future, if that's even feasible. But I know that we are looking at that, and I wanted Randy just to be aware that that is on the radar, as well as, and I agree with making sure we have access for Mr. Fellerson as well, and as well as the, I, my guess is, we wouldn't be able to landlock somebody for any period of time if that was their only way, anyway. So I'm assuming that's already been reviewed and addressed?
Yeah, we've had conversations with Mr. Fellerson and with Elk Grove Water District. I've been in a number of conversations with the Water District especially, and we're working through in our plan what are, how to address the agreement that we do have with the Water District. So we're aware of it, and we are working on it.
Okay, perfect. That's all I have. And I support this so heartily, a great, great addition.
Thank you very much.
Oh, and, and the other issue that Randy brought up, which we've talked about, it's not in this item, but maybe you can address the Elk Grove Boulevard improvements with the Kent Street Light. What, what's going on with that?
We have completed a traffic study. We've provided comments, that's being finalized, and I believe Mr. Bucy is presenting that at the end of August. Is that correct?
Yeah, we're going to bring an item forward to talk about intersection controls at the August 28th meeting. We're looking at Elk Grove and Railroad Street, and Elk Grove and Kent Street, trying to talk about the different things we've looked at and what will work. And so, hopefully, based on the direction we get at that time, then we'd, we'd find a way to implement what, what the council directs.
Bob, maybe you can elaborate, because one of the things that you, you discussed in my briefing was both some short-term solutions as well as some long-term solutions.
Sure, I think we looked at both, trying to, we looked at signals at both intersections. The one, the issue at Railroad Street is we're so close to the tracks. It's just, it's just very tight. Some of the comments we received during the open house were really good from the public, were if you have an event, is there a way to design the Railroad Street and Elk Grove Boulevard intersection so you don't have raised median, so a police officer might be able to let control, let traffic come out and actually turn left under a controlled condition? Thought that was a very good comment. I think we're looking at that as part of the intersection control, and we've looked at, at putting a signal at Kent Street. I think likely that's going to be the solution. We do have Phase Two of the, of the project on Elk Grove Boulevard, but that's not scheduled to be constructed. It would go from School Street to Waterman. That will be constructed for several years, so, you know, when do we put, if we put a signal in there, when does it go in? How's it, how do we coordinate with that, with a project that's not going to be built for several years? There are such things, you can put a temporary traffic signal with overhead, you know, overhead lines in order to power it. So there, there are some options, and I think at the end of August, when we come back for report, council, we're going to talk about some of that and how to address that.
It'd be, it'd be nice to see at least some type of temporary modifications in conjunction with the completion of Railroad.
Sure.
The Railroad improvements as well as the Old Town Plaza.
I think that's, generally, the takeaway is, what, what can we do? Because once we complete that, there'll be use there, and, and we really can't wait several more years for Phase Two of the streetscape project to be under construction.
Yeah.
And so, we're trying to figure, okay, how do we advance that piece of it without creating a tremendous amount of throwaway cost? a tremendous amount of throwaway cost?
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. So Randy, that was old man Williamson that cut down all those trees. And he said, "I spent my whole life watering those trees, I'll cut them down if I want to." And the only good perhaps to come out of that is that prompted Supervisor Isla Collin to recognize that we need to prevent that in the future, and so that was the impetus behind the oak tree mitigation ordinance. Kristin, I would make sure that we address Mr. Fellerson's concerns with respect to keeping Railroad Street open. The one thing I will say, sir, is that we're not planning on beginning construction right going into the wet season, we're going to start the construction next spring, build through the summer and have it wrapped up by next fall. So hopefully, it should be a pretty seamless thing. And then with respect to the concern for the folks that I think aptly recognize the need for the improvement with, for parking and for safety concerns, for pedestrians, bicycles and such, but also keeping an eye towards preserving some of those trees, staff is going to take a serious look at that and how we can modify the design to incorporate as many of those trees as possible. I'm not going to sugarcoat it, some of them are smack dab in the middle of where the new road's going to go, and they're going to have to come out. But I think that the overall need for the increased amount of parking, as well as having the sidewalks and the curbs and the bike paths, are a needed improvement to that area as well as what's going to be happening up at the Old Town Plaza. So I know that they are looking at how they can maybe modify a little bit of the on-street parking and do some bulbouts and some different things, and so I hope that that dialogue continues and that we end up something that is amenable to everybody. So with that, I do have a motion in the second to adopt the resolution. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Onto item 9.2.
Item 9.2 is a public hearing to consider a resolution approving Republic Services' reported delinquent solid waste and storm drain utility charges and proposing their collection on the Sacramento County tax roll.
Jamie, if you go all the way down to the little bottom there, you'll see a lit-up button there. Come over to the right, to the right, keep going, keep going, there you go, hit the one right there. Go over a little farther, a little farther, a little farther, that one!
Thank you. Okay. Good evening, Vice Mayor, council members. Jamie Bandi, Revenue Manager. I'm here this evening to present the report of delinquent utility charges. I have a very brief presentation this evening. So effective July 1st, 2017, the city contracts with Republic Services to provide the solid waste and the storm drain utility billing. All the accounts included in the proposed tax levy are delinquent with Republic Services for charges incurred after that July 1st date, and they do remain unpaid for at least 120 days. Just some background information, the city has always utilized the county tax roll to recover costs that have already been incurred. Republic Services does continue to utilize this process for collection of their delinquent charges with the city facilitating the process. On June 23rd of this year, roughly 3,400 account holders were notified of tonight's public hearing. While the majority of account holders are billed for both solid waste and storm drain, we do report those to the county as separate reports. That breaks down to just over 3,300 accounts were billed for solid waste, representing about $285,000 in delinquent charges. For the storm drain accounts, there were just under that same amount of accounts, representing just a little over $1 million in delinquent charges. However, at this point, the last update that I did receive from Republic, they have already received a pretty significant response. The number of accounts is already reduced to less than 2,300, with the solid waste delinquent charges being down to about 221,000, and the storm drain charges has gone down to about $834,000. So anybody who does bring their accounts current by July 25th will be removed from that delinquent report, and they will not be submitted to the county for collection. I'm happy to answer any questions, and we also do have representatives from Republic tonight if there's any questions for them as well.
Thank you so much. Any questions? No. Thank you very much. I'll declare the public hearing open. I'll open the public comment opportunity, I have nobody signed up to speak. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public comment opportunity, declare the public hearing closed, and move to council deliberation.
Staff's recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Onto regular agenda action items, item 10.1.
We do have item 9.3 just before that, Vice Mayor. And that's a public hearing to consider a resolution setting disposal fees for the small quantity generator program at the Special Waste Collection Center.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, city council members. My name is Carlos Duque, Environment Specialist at the Special Waste Collection Center with Recycling and Waste Division. This presentation this evening is to consider a resolution setting disposal fees for the small quantity generator program at the Special Waste Collection Center. Little bit of background, the Special Waste Collection Center opened in 2014 to provide residents and qualifying businesses with a convenient and affordable way to dispose hazardous waste. Qualifying businesses are defined as small quantity generators, or SQG by regulation. SQG disposal fees were set by resolution by city council on 2013, in 2013, prior to opening the Special Waste Collection Center. Because the Special Waste Collection Center wasn't open there yet, there was no data available to actual, to actual known the disposal cost that this program will bring. As a result, the SQG fees are, were set based on our existing jurisdictions, Sacramento County, City of Sacramento, HSW facilities. The Special Waste Collection Center operations are funded primarily from three sources. A portion of the solid waste admin fee paid by residents, the small quantity generator disposal fee paid by businesses when they drop off their hazardous waste, and reimbursement from other jurisdictions that, when their residents use the facility. The SQG, SQGs fee have not been increased ever since it first got approved from 2013. The disposal labor and overhead costs have increased since that time. Revenue from e-waste recycling has been used to offset that rising cost. However, e-waste is now longer a revenue generating, and so there's, now there's cost to recycle e-waste. As a result, the current SQG fee is, are insufficient to cover for actual disposal costs of businesses, and there is no available revenue to offset this cost. So we started in a staff analysis, and we use our actual disposal labor and overhead cost data to determine the city cost to a set package sort and dispose the waste generated by the SQG fee. With that said, Heather Neff will continue further with the staff analysis, and that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Heather Neff, Recycling and Waste Manager. As Carlos mentioned, we did quite a bit of analysis in developing this proposed fee schedule for businesses that use the Special Waste Collection Center. We gather data on disposal labor and overhead costs and use that to determine what our actual cost to dispose of business waste is. We also had to add in some fees to the fee schedule because the schedule was developed prior to opening the SWAC. All of the types of waste that could potentially be included weren't included since then. We've been in operation for five years, we have gotten a better handle on the different types of waste that we receive, and so we had to add in some new fees for things that we received for which there was not a fee in the past. For most waste types, as you'll see on the proposed schedule, the recommended fee is a significant increase, and that's because they haven't been updated in five years, and we've been using those additional revenues from e-waste to help offset rising costs. We, once we developed the proposed fee schedule, because there were significant increases, we wanted to see how that aligned with the fee schedules of other jurisdictions, so we compared it to five other jurisdictions that have HHW facilities, and in some cases, our proposed fees were higher, and in other cases, they were a little bit lower. As you can see from this chart, the line down the middle is zero, and the bars represent the difference between our proposed fee and the average fee of all other jurisdictions. So if you look at the left-hand side on the bottom, the proposed fee for antifreeze, the difference is negative $3 and change. So that means our fee, our proposed fee, is about a little over $3 less than the average of other jurisdictions. Going to the other side of the chart, our HHW admin fee at the top there is a little over $3, so on average, our fee is higher than the average of the other jurisdictions. So what you can get from this chart overall is that some of our fees are higher, some of our fees are lower, but on a whole, when you look at the mix of different types of waste that businesses are bringing in, the average is equivalent and in line with what other, what they would pay at other jurisdictions. What this does is ensure that our local businesses who are exclusively using the Special Waste Collection Center for their disposal are not at a competitive disadvantage, disadvantage because their disposal costs are going to be similar to what other businesses will pay in other jurisdictions. I also want to note that under the current structure, the administrative fee is waived for businesses that are located in Elk Grove, and we're proposing to continue doing that. So who is going to be impacted by this change? As you can see from this chart, Elk Grove businesses represent about 63% of our total business users, however, they're, represent just over half of total business visits. And that is because businesses outside of Elk Grove are more likely to make multiple trips to our facility. The total program costs that all businesses together pay in disposal fees under the current fee schedule is about $9,800 total per year. Under the proposed fee schedule, that would increase to about $31,000. The difference of 21,200 is, more than half of that is comprised of two items that I would like to highlight briefly. Fire extinguishers, the current fee rate has actually never been sufficient to cover our disposal costs. And when the original fee schedule was established, as we mentioned, it was before the SWAC opened, so, and also before our disposal agreements with our vendors were made. So we can assume that perhaps the disposal costs were not known at that time, and that's why the fee was not set equivalent to actual cost. So this is an item on which we've never fully recovered costs. We've only received fire extinguishers from two businesses, so this cost increase that represents a large chunk of the total would impact primarily these two businesses if they continue to use us for disposal. Neither one of them are located in Sacramento, or in Elk Grove, excuse me, they're both in Sacramento. And just to note too, because there is a pretty steep proposed increase for this cost item, we are looking for alternative vendors to bring that pricing down and to lower those costs. We haven't secured an agreement with an alternate vendor yet, so for what, for now, we're proposing to set disposal fees equal to actual costs capped at the rate we pay our current vendor, which is what's shown on the proposed schedule. The other item is e-waste, I like to call that out because, as Carlos mentioned in the introduction, previously, we, this had been a revenue generating waste stream for the SWAC. That is no longer the case, recycling markets have changed so much, commodities prices have gone significantly down, so now where we were earning money, we are now paying to recycle e-waste, and that's a cost that needs to be recovered. E-waste is a large component of the, of what we receive at the SWAC, almost 45%. So to quickly wrap up, I want to highlight some alternatives because we are proposing, you know, increases in fees. One of the options we highlighted in the staff report is to retain the existing fee schedule, and if that's the case though, you would have to identify an alternate source of funding so that we could recover the difference between our actual costs and what the fees are that are collected. As a result, that recommendation was not supported, or excuse me, not recommended by staff. Another one would be to put phase in the proposed fee increases over two or more years, and again, if that is selected option, we would have to find an alternative source of funding. So the staff recommendation for you this evening is to conduct a public hearing and approve the proposed fee schedule to ensure full cost recovery. And also, we're asking that council authorize annual inflationary adjustments to ensure that moving forward, we continue to have full cost recovery for our waste disposal costs. And that concludes our presentation. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to take them.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Heather? No? Thank you so much. All right, at this point, I'll declare the public hearing open. I will open the public comment opportunity, I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public comment opportunity, declare the public hearing closed, and move to council deliberation. All right, a motion in the second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously, and now we will move on to regular agenda action items, item 10.1.
Item 10.1 is to receive information and consider adoption of resolutions authorizing city manager to execute startup Elk Grove economic incentive agreements with Integrove and Sensor Transport, Inc.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm Louis Sagular, Economic Development Specialist for the City of Elk Grove, and the action in front of you tonight is to consider adopting two resolutions related to the city's startup Elk Grove incentive program. First, I'd like to provide you with some background information. In 2017, the city identified entrepreneurship and startup support as a strategic imperative and directed staff to identify related incentives. This continues to be part of our ongoing economic development strategy and a key component of our small business support platform. Council's direction, staff created the Startup Elk Grove Incentive Program, and it was formally adopted on August 22nd of 2018. Recently, at the last council meeting, you, the council amended the program to broaden the types of incentives available. Now, you may recall that the startup incentive program has three main components, launch, scale up, and spaces. At the launch level, the city may award grants up to $10,000 to entrepreneurs with high potential concepts to launch their business in Elk Grove. This also includes an annual membership at a co-working facility within our city. For scale up, the city may award incentives ranging from $30,000 up to $150,000 to startup companies that demonstrate high growth potential and are looking to scale operations in Elk Grove. At this level, the startup is, has formed a business, has raised capital, has a team, a product, and paying customers. Finally, spaces, the, under spaces, the city may award incentives to operators of co-working facilities, and the amounts up to $100,000 for, and the amount of $150 for business incubators, and amounts up to $250,000 for business accelerators. So shortly after the program was launched, staff received numerous inquiries for, requests for funding. To evaluate these inquiries, staff used the following process. Staff determined that the inquiries were consistent with the goals of the program and met the guidelines. The list was narrowed down to nine companies that were formally invited to apply. From those, we received seven applications. These applications were assessed internally by staff and externally by Claggett Wolf Associates, a consulting firm who, with over 30 years of expertise in entrepreneurship, incubation, acceleration, and business development and training. At the conclusion of this process, staff provided recommendations to the city manager for two companies, Integrove and Sensor Transport. So the first action for you to consider is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into startup Elk Grove economic incentive agreement with Integrove in the amount of $47,500. Integrove continues to be the only co-working facility in our community and is a key component of the city's effort to support an innovation ecosystem. Council will recall that the city was a founding sponsor of Integrove and provided funding in 2016 in the amount of $27,500. Integrove currently serves 75 members, representing 30 small businesses, many of which are startups. Now, the grant to Integrove will, will ensure that Integrove remains in Elk Grove for an additional three years. The funds will be used to help offset rent for the space, but more importantly, to expand and modernize the facilities. These improvements will make the space more competitive and desirable for attracting entrepreneurs and startups to our community. Key terms of the agreement include that Integrove operates a minimum of three years, provides, gives preference to any startup company in their space that is referred to us, to them by their program. Integrove will provide quarterly reports to the city, and the funds, and the way the funds will be provided will lump sum payment. The second action for you to consider is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a startup Elk Grove incentive agreement with Sensor Transport in the amount of $75,000. Sensor Transport is an Elk Grove-based company founded by Sensor Transport is an Elk Grove-based company founded by an Elk Grove resident. It has developed a software-as-a-service platform that tracks and monitors cargo in real-time. The product is disrupting the logistics industry by creating a fully transparent supply chain network. Customers can get real-time location and condition of cargo, increasing and gaining full visibility, increasing efficiency and gaining full visibility. Sensor Transport has passed the stage of having a minimal viable product. To date, it has received a total of eight-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars in seed investment. It has taken its product to market, and it has, is generating revenues from, from customers such as, as St. Lauder and S.D.'s final model. After developing the product in 2018, Sensor Transport participated in the next logistics accelerator program in Hamburg, Germany, one of the world's, uh, logistics hubs. This led to an investment of five-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. And it's important to point out that half a million dollars was from, um, a company called Maersk, which is the largest shipping company in the world. Recently, Sensor Transport was admitted as one of five companies from over twenty-two-hundred applicants into an accelerator program in New Jersey, uh, called Newark Venture Partners. This led to additional investment of almost half a million dollars. It has provided Sensor Transport access to venture capital networks. Sensor Transport is currently raising a bridge, a bridge seed round of one million dollars that will enable it to focus on growing its customers and its revenues. This round of fu- of funding will position Sensor Transport to raise a Series A round of three million dollars and by 2020 at a company valuation of ten million dollars. Best, based on conservative projections, in five years, Sensor Transport should go, grow to two-hundred employees and occupy thirty-five thousand square feet of office Now as a reminder, the purpose of this program is to identify and invest in high-growth potential startups early on, when they are a team of five, ten, and support them so that when they do grow exponentially, they stay put and become future employment anchors for the city. Based on all the due diligence that was conducted, we are confident that Sensor Transport has a, has a high probability of achieving these milestones. So the grant to Sensor Transport will be used for its co- the costs allowed under the program, such as operating, product development, equipment, and hiring. The grant is also, um, one, seven, seven and a half percent of the current funding round of one million dollars, and will be paid in two installments to minimize the city's risk. The first payment will be of twenty-five thousand dollars. And the conditions include that Sensor Transport will be headquartered in Elk Grove, have a minimum of five employees, and has, had received them, uh, fifty thousand dollars in investment from the founder. The second payment will be of fifty thousand dollars and will be contingent upon the company raising an additional three-hundred thousand dollars of capital, uh, from third-party investors. Like Agrove, Sensor Transport will provide quarterly progress and activity reports to the city. The city will also be, uh, included in all investor meetings, and if at any time the city is no longer headquartered, the, the, the company's no longer headquartered in the city, um, the grant funds plus interest will be due. Once again, here are the recommendations. I won't go through, in the interest of time, I'll go through all of them, but I do want to recognize that Steve Barnett, founder of Agrove, is here at the audience, and also Rob Haney, founder of Sensor Transport, and they'll be available, available to answer any questions about their companies. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Any questions for Luis? No? Thank you so much. All right, I'll go ahead and open the public comment opportunity. Have no one signed up to speak? Do either of the representatives wish to say anything? Seeing no one rushed the podium, I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and go to council deliberation and direction.
Vice Mayor.
Council member soon.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, you know, this, uh, what we're talking about here, um, continuing funding for Agrove and then funding Sensor Transport, I mean, talk about proof of concept. Uh, I want to congratulate Sensor, um, Transport on their progress, and it's just so great to hear, you know, you guys started in Elk Grove and, and watching you grow right here in Elk Grove. I'm really proud of you guys, and, and again, Agrove. Steve, uh, you've been great, you've been, you've been handling this organization, and I am, again, I'm just thrilled. I'm thrilled to see the success of, of this, uh, both Agrove and then Sensor Transport. So anyway, with that, I'll support the, the, both resolutions.
Council member Detrick.
Yeah, going back to when, uh, when I got on the council, we didn't have an economic development plan. And, uh, I know Vice Mayor Hume and I were involved when we brought this forward. Now, this is exactly one of the items that was really important us to, to grow it, take care of our homegrown, and, uh, to be able to offer these two different plans, I think, is, is fantastic. And I know that, uh, Darryl, you and your team, Luis, Ms. Brown, if she's here, guys, uh, you guys, I, I know you guys got a whiteboard with, uh, probably two-hundred different businesses on there that you guys monitor, and so I, I applaud for what you guys are doing. It's not an easy task. I mean, it's competitive, not only in the Sacramento region, but across the United States for what you guys have to compete against, and, uh, I pre- appreciate, uh, Steve being here tonight as the founder of Agrove and as, as well as the folks from Sensor Transportation. Congratulations, and I support this and, uh, be willing to move this forward, make a motion to you staff's recommendation.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, and the only thing I'll add to that is that I, I agree with the, the comments from my colleagues, and I want to thank you, Steve. You know, I mean, we invested originally in the hub, and now that hub is tar- starting to, uh, show spokes, and I tell people that economic development is oftentimes more about, uh, planting acorns than it is harvesting oaks. And, uh, I think, I see this effort as planting a pretty big acorn, so I appreciate that and wholeheartedly support it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Carries unanimously. On to item ten point two.
Congratulations.
Ten point two is to receive a presentation regarding an update to the two-hundred-year floodplain study and provide direction as appropriate.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Hume, council members. Amitash Sandy with the Engineering Services Division. The item before you tonight is an update to the two-hundred-year floodplain study, which was presented to council last January. I'll provide a brief background regarding this item. In 2007, the California legislator passed Senate Bills Five and Twelve Seventy-Eight, which required all cities and counties to amend their general plans and zoning codes to address urban level of flood protection by July 2016. To comply with, with these requirements, the city amended its, uh, general plan and zoning code in July of 2016. Uh, they, an amendment was made to the general plan prohibiting development within the two-hundred-year floodplain unless urban level of flood, flood protection is provided. An amendment to Title Twenty-three of the Elk Grove Municipal Code, uh, which includes requirements for developing in areas within the two-hundred-year floodplain, and the addition of Elk Grove Municipal Code, Chapter Sixteen-Fifteen, Flood Damage Prevention. In 2017, staff tasked MBK engineers with analyzing the two-hundred-year floodplain. MBK completed the, uh, problem identification report, and this was presented to council in two thousand seven, in January of 2018. Pursuant to the findings of the report, council directed staff to further analyze the two-hundred-year floodplain water surface elevations and determine if there were any benefits of regional flood control projects within the Sacramento region to potentially reduce those water surface elevations. Rick Reinhardt with MBK Engineers is here today to re- present the findings of the report and, um, discuss next steps.
Good to see you, Rick.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Hume, city council members. It's a pleasure to be here today. Want to start by just providing, uh, context and background for some of the recommendations by summarizing our, um, our previous presentation on the problem identification report that we prepared. Uh, we're, we're discussing the existing Laguna West levee system. It's approximately four and a half miles long. It serves as a, serves as a perimeter levee system which protects from floodwaters from Beach Stone Lake. So the entire area to the west of I-5 is a, is a giant lake in large flood events, and, uh, backing up from the, um, from the delta and then from a failure of the Sacramento River levee. Sacramento County originally certified this levee in, um, two thousand, and the Laguna West levees were annexed into the city, and the city is now responsible for operation and maintenance of these, this levee system. As part of our problem identification report, we looked at the state's two-hundred-year urban level of flood protection standards. As I stated earlier, the, the levee was originally built to meet FEMA standards. Um, the two-hundred-year water surface's elevation, twenty-one point seven, which results in potential overtopping of the levee system and, uh, outflanking at the up and downstream ends where the levee system ties into high ground. And there is the potential for the depth of flooding to be greater than two feet in the Laguna West floodplain. Based on this analysis of the water surface, the levee ser- the levee would need to be raised approximately three and a half feet.
Wow.
So this graphic shows the, the water surface that the levee was originally designed to. It's elevation eighteen. Our hundred-year water surface is almost, I'm sorry, our two-hundred-year water surface is almost four feet higher than that, and so it would result in the levee needing to be raised approximately three and a half feet. When, um, when we concluded our problem identification report, as Amitash outlined, we were tasked with looking at the two-hundred-year floodplain specifically for a couple of reasons. First, we want to understand in more detail how it affects flooding in the city specifically related to your ULOP findings you need to make. The importance of that is that for ULOP, if the flooding is less than three feet in depth, then ULOP doesn't apply. So the first thing was to identify all the areas that wouldn't be three feet in deep and pull them out of the floodplain. In this graphic, anything that's not highlighted on here or in, shaded in here is less than three feet. In doing the analysis, because the, the beach lake is, is just a lo- it's a lake, it's a pond, it, it fills all these low areas, and there's not a significant difference in elevation. I talked about the elevation in the beach lake being twenty-one point seven. It only drops about two inches to twenty-one point five, um, in the city limits. But it, the, the map is important for your ULOP findings, but then also, it, it's going to help your office emergency services understand, in the event of a large flood event, um, the areas it would be subject to inundation. The, um, problem identification report conclusions was that the levee doesn't meet urban levee design criteria for two-hundred-year flood protection. As I mentioned earlier, it would take about a three and a half foot raise to meet ULDC requirements, and the cost for the, for raising levee would be about fifteen point two million. Another issue we identified in the problem identification report is the levee, when it was certified, did not include information about the foundation that the levee was built on. And so if you followed some of the projects in the region, West Sacramento, Sacramento, you've seen these very large, expensive projects to deal with foundation concerns, commonly referred to as underseepage. And so if, if and when this levee needs to be recertified to FEMA, you're lacking the geotechnical information that you'll need to certify that levee. As Amitash covered, uh, discussed earlier in the introduction, you've met the requirements for urban level of protection, uh, and the next steps that we're recommending is a geotechnical analysis, really geared more towards the hundred-year. It'll be helpful if the city ever decides to pursue two-hundred-year, but primarily, if and when recertification's required, you're going to need this geotechnical information, and it's going to, um, uh, be a necessary element of that package. One, one thing I'd like to say about the geotechnical analysis is that your levee system is different than the ones I just mentioned. The levee systems along the Sacramento River, through Sacramento, West Sacramento, Yuba City, Marysville, they're right on the historic floodplain. And where the river has meandered over time, the levee was built across that. They have very permeable foundations with sands and gravels in it. So you have these very expensive projects. That's not the case here. Um, I'm not expecting to identify problems with this geotechnical analysis, other than, uh, where with those old stream crossings. And may, maybe the foundation wasn't dug out for those stream crossings, and so, uh, it's important information will help understand if there's risk associated with these existing levee, and then inform the future certifications. And that concludes the presentation.
Great, thank you. Uh, any questions at this point?
Quick, quick question. Uh, thanks, Rick, for that presentation. Uh, appreciate your comments too on the distinction between the, the geotechnical information for levees in Sacramento area and here. Uh, how about the, um, the, the river system versus, uh, what, what we have in, in this area?
Well, you're, you have a levee that was built to modern standards in terms of levy bank, embankment itself. Um, the, the levees along the Sacramento River were largely built from dredging, so that they're very permeable, sandy levees. If you look at the performance of those levees in nineteen eighty-six and nineteen ninety-seven, so lots of floodfighting, landslide slips. Um, our problem identification report really looked at your greatest risk being overtopping of your levee systems. And so it's going to take a very large flood event, a larger flood event than we've seen in our recorded history, maybe even going back to the eighteen fifties. We haven't seen a, a flood event that we're going to expect would have overtopped this levee. But of course, we're planning for larger floods. We're planning for the effects of climate change. And so in those scenarios, we could be looking at things that we've seen in the past, and the city will be at risk, um, of flooding in, in a very large flood event in the future.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, I'll go ahead and open the public comment opportunity. I do have a couple of, of people signed up to speak. Jan Smutney-Jones, you're up first, sir, and then, uh, following Jan is Lynn Wheat.
Great, thank you very much, Vice Mayor Hume and, uh, city council members. And I'm glad I drove my vault today. It started very appropriately here, um, with, talking about electric vehicles. However, that's not what I'm here to, to talk about today. Uh, I'm Jan Smutney-Jones. I live in the Stone Lake neighborhood. I work with NEST, this, uh, the citizens groups that's opposed to the NCU Trauma Center being built at Stone Lake Landing. And I'd like to draw your attention to, this is attachment two on page twenty-one. I don't know if you can pull it up on the screen or not, uh, but it is a pretty sobering map of the neighborhood that we live in. And if you look right here where the sort of I-5 is, and you look sort of to the southwest, that's Stone Lake Landing, and that's where the proposed four-hundred-bed hospital and, uh, I think there's dorms for three-hundred people, i- is, uh, planned to be located. You will also notice it's light in, in middle shade of blue. That means it's between three to ten feet of water in the event of a two-hundred-year flood, uh, and I think you, uh, the report very well, uh, lays out, uh, di- different scenarios of how that can happen, primarily, I think, on the, on the Sacramento River levees. Uh, so obviously, it's a bi- a big issue, and, um, by the way, my house is in the middle of all that, so this really wasn't happy news for me. Um, but, uh, I want to point to, out to that the general plan, and I think you heard this earlier, uh, but, policy ER two-dash-three, uh, the city is to locate essential public services, governmental, uh, services and in central healthcare, um, facilities outside the one-hundred and two-hundred-year, uh, flood zones, except where such locations, uh, would be, uh, compromised, uh, in terms of their functioning. Obviously, a trauma center is a, essential healthcare, uh, is a, essential healthcare facilities. There's nothing about this location, uh, that is, uh, essential for it to be located right there. I won't belabor the, the issue, we've talked about that before. Uh, and there's no practical condition, uh, that can be applied to this project, because all the roadways leading in to the trauma center, four-hundred-bed trauma center, will be inundated between three and ten feet of water, every single one of them, uh, including I-5. Uh, so it would be irresponsible and I think imprudent, I mean, the, the existing policy is a prudent one. Uh, we don't want to be building things where they, where they're subject to flooding. Um, yeah, and so we would encourage that, that we not move forward with, uh, obviously, uh, building this hospital at that location. Evacuations of healthcare facilities have a, an unfortunate history, if we can recall, Hurricane Katrina. Um, and rather than arguing with CNU over the next five years about the appropriateness of this hospital at that location, perhaps they could be convinced to move someplace that's a little more appropriate for, uh, the, uh, the construction of such a hospital if it's truly needed, outside the two-hundred-year floodplain. Um, and, um, so we thank you for your consideration of our concerns on this very, uh, important public safety issue, and, uh, we look forward to talking with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. So I appreciate the report tonight and some discussion around this, because of course I am always concerned about flood- I am always concerned about flooding. So I think that you looking at protecting the residents of the area is indeed very important. I heard something about 15.2 million to repair to bring this up to the 200-year floodplain. And I'm just wondering who's going to be paying for that and who will most benefit from that and how that will be dealt with if that's the direction we're going to be going. But I see that we're going to be looking at spending 560 to 100,000, 500,000 plus on this. What I would like to have is for this part of the study to go out to bid. A lot of times we dispense with bidding and we just choose a firm to do it. I hope with this amount of money that it will go out to bid. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wheat was the last speaker card I have on this item. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close public comment and move to council deliberation direction. Any direction for staff? Councilmember Detrick?
Yeah, I don't know if Bob would be the person to address this, but I had the same question on the funding. Is there a funding mechanism in the Laguna West? One of the fee programs that covers any expenses related to this? Or is this something spread across citywide?
There's no, that's always been the issue with this as you're looking at the 200-year floodplain improvements. There's no real good funding source at the moment. There's, if we were talking about the 100-year floodplain, you obviously can go to the property owners and talk about assessments to offset the cost of flood insurance. But in this case, there's, you know, they're outside the 100-year floodplain. They're in compliance with the 200-year floodplain if they're already existing. So there's no real financial incentive, say, for property owners to agree to an assessment. Outside of that, there might be state and federal grants possibly, but again, this meets 100-year standard. So that's the difficult part. If, you know, in order to fund, say, a 15 and $20 million project, you know, finding a funding source would be difficult. That would probably be the most challenging part of the whole thing. Designing and constructing it would be, would probably be the easy part.
Do we have any other areas in the city of Elk Grove besides Laguna West that has this problem?
No, we do not.
So the county never put anything in place either, I'm taking it, either?
Well, SB 5-
Because the county approved this development.
Yeah, SB 5 came in after, after all of that existed.
Okay.
Any other questions? No? Do we have any particular direction that staff is looking to receive from us?
Well, we had recommended moving forward the geotechnical. We've already actually budgeted the funds in the city's current budget.
Does that go out to bid?
A portion of it that was related to the consultant or the technical piece of it, we hire that based on the best qualified. But as far as the actual physical work, we can take a look at trying to bid that out and get the best price.
I'll move staff's recommendation.
Okay. All right. I think that's direction then. You see nodding heads? Good.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item 10.3 then.
That's to receive the report on overhead illuminated street name signs and provide direction as appropriate.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Sean Gallagher, operations and maintenance manager. I am here to present a recommendation to change the city's standard for overhead street name signs from illumination to metal type. So in an effort to improve efficiency and implement cost-effective maintenance programs, ONM has begun developing proactive maintenance programs. For one of the programs we're currently working on is the sign maintenance program. We're currently in the process of collecting and analyzing that data. We've actually completed the first phase, which is the collection, mapping, and assessment of all the traffic signs within the city. Currently, we're QC-ing that data and looking at maintenance intervals and budget costs. One of the things that came out as we were looking at the second phase was the cost to maintain one particular type of sign. The map here shows the 23,271 signs that are within the city limits. They're broken down further into four main groups. Regulatory signs, which are typically your stop signs or your speed limit signs, warning signs, might be a curve sign or a lane drop. Guide signs are your street name signs. Another can be kind of a miscellaneous of a lot of different signs, whether it's tourist information or some sort of specific location. Within guide signs is our overhead street name signs. They only make up 2% of our total sign quantity. This map shows the locations, the intersections that all of the signs are at. There are three types of overhead signs within the city: metal, LED, and fluorescent, with fluorescent being the largest number within the city. Right here kind of breaks down the total numbers. There's 507 overhead signs, 448 are illuminated, with the bulk of them being fluorescent at 357. The fluorescent type is the standard inherited from the county. They were installed and maintained as the city standard until the LED technology kind of improved and we then changed that standard to LED. There are also 59 metal signs that were previously illuminated. At some point, they were removed, the illuminated signs were removed and replaced with metal. And the current condition of illuminated signs is pretty poor. There are what is estimated about a quarter to a third of them that are in bad repair and are basically non-operable or in need of replacement. We have missing panels, peeling, cracked faded faces, and just generally missing in other locations. So the background of how we got to this point is ONM has budgeted $200,000 for all sign maintenance. And this was based off of kind of historical without any sort of real understanding of what our inventory actually looked like. And it was a fairly static reacting to what was needed. In analyzing this particular class of signs, to just repair and replace the signs, about $1.6 million is needed to get them into functional shape and have them in a good state. We're proposing, if this was chosen, to do that over three years at $550,000. After that time, $225,000 a year would need to be budgeted just to keep them in a good state of repair, which more than doubles our current budget. Our recommendation is to switch over to metal cost signs, which are 17% of the cost of illuminated sign. Basically, an illuminated sign installed right now is about $3,250, whereas a metal sign is $550 on average. The metal signs also provide extended life, have limited maintenance, and actually are more secure to the pole because we strap them instead of hanging them, which leads to less damage. Metal signs also have improved visibility. The illuminated signs have a restriction in their width and their height, which causes us to not use the California MUTC standard font sizes. So letters get shrunk together, get smaller, and then become more difficult to read at distances. Also with the new sign material type, which is type 11 or diamond grade material, it actually captures headlights from outside of the main drive lane. So when it's up in the top, it actually captures that and reflects it back. There's also a small amount of electricity savings that would be experienced as well if we remove these signs. Here is the proposed metal sign graphics. You can see that for double signs, we would be able to extend that up to 30 inches in height, where we can only go to 24 currently with the illuminated. And then our width is unlimited, basically. Whatever that needed to be to meet MUTCD standards, we'd be able to meet that. So we're recommending changing the standard from illuminated to metal for cost savings, visibility, reduced maintenance, and lifespan. If council directed us to not change this, to keep the existing standard and to move to repair the illuminated signs, basically we'd need to find a source of funding. The only program that has significant funding to fund these signs is the pavement program. But to fund these the way they need to be funded and to get them back into a good state of repair would require us to remove about 4.5 million square feet of slurry resurfacing over the first three years and then 750,000 square feet annually after that. And if you take that into consideration with the next year's resurfacing project, there's 3.7 million square feet of slurry in that project with about 163 segments. To reduce that project, to fund this type of sign maintenance, we would be removing 66 street segments off of that to fund that. And then that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to take any questions.
Great. Yeah, I just want to add something that, you know, we inherited this standard from the county and the county in fact has stopped installing it themselves. They've started to replace them actually in 2013 because of cost. So the county isn't even using this standard anymore.
Very good. Any questions for Sean? Yeah, customer Detrick?
I got more of a comment. Sounds like we just talked about the levy system that we inherited from the county that we got. And now we're talking about the signs we inherited. I think we're getting short-changed on our investment that we pay on our revenue neutrality. I think we got short-changed big time.
So you want to back cost, the cost of improving the levies and the cost of replacing these signs, we'll prorate that out of the revenue neutrality?
That'll work.
Okay.
Just take 25 million out and we'll start there.
Sounds good. All right, thank you so much.
Jason, work on that.
I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but I'll open the public comment opportunity. Is there anybody that would like to talk about this? No, okay, then I'll close the public comment opportunity and move to council direction. I don't think we need another need of direction other than go forth and save money.
I think it's great.
Metal signs. Thank you.
On to item 10.4.
That's the autonomous connected vehicle readiness plan.
Bless you.
I am Ryan Chapman, traffic engineer. And today we have Rob Haninochi and Josh Peterman from Farr and Pierce to help present the autonomous connected vehicle readiness plan. There's been a lot of interest in autonomous and connected vehicles or self-driving cars, both in the city and nationally, and this plan is designed to help answer questions about the future of transportation and implementation of the autonomous vehicles technology. The plan also identifies what actions can be taken by the city to better prepare for the future. The recommendation in this plan are consistent with what we have presented to your council earlier this year with the traffic congestion management plan. Rob will now discuss the readiness plan in more detail.
As Ryan mentioned, my name is Rob Haninochi. I'm an associate with Farr and Pierce and it's my pleasure to be here with you this evening.
Good evening.
I would like to just provide an overview of the autonomous and connected vehicle plan, readiness plan that we've prepared for the city. Really, at its core, this plan aims to answer the question of how can Elk Grove plan for the arrival of autonomous and connected vehicles? And for purposes of the presentation, I'm going to refer to autonomous vehicles as AVs and connected vehicles as CVs, just because otherwise I'll be saying that over and over and over again. So the plan consists of three sections. A section providing some background information on AVs and CVs, what we anticipate the effects those vehicles will have on transportation and the built environment, and then some initial recommendations for the city to consider moving forward. So starting first with a little bit of background information on autonomous vehicles and CVs. So what are autonomous vehicles and connected vehicles? So I'll start with AVs. So AVs are vehicles that are equipped with sensors and have an onboard computer. And through those sensors, they're able to detect their environment, things like striping or a speed limit sign or a traffic signal, and then provide the information to the computer. The computer actually then drives the vehicle as opposed to a human operator. Within the autonomous technology, there's actually a wide range in different types of automation. And so the Society of Automotive Engineers have defined six levels of automation, ranging from level zero with no automation to level five, which is a fully autonomous vehicle, one that doesn't need a steering wheel or even a brake or accelerator because it can fully drive itself under all circumstances. And then those levels that fall in between. Today, on the roads, you can find level one and level two automation vehicles. Those are features like adaptive cruise control, lane keeping assist, things where the driver still has to pay attention, but you know, the vehicle still is able to accelerate, brake, and actually keep its lane through the use of its sensors and computer. Level three and level four vehicles are not yet available in the United States, but they're in the process of being tested. That's actually a situation where a driver just needs to be able to take control when prompted under some circumstances or all circumstances. And actually, in many cases, the vehicle's able to drive itself in many conditions. So what are connected vehicles? A connected vehicle is one that actually is able to communicate wirelessly with objects in its environment, whether that be another connected vehicle that's equipped with that communication ability or infrastructure. So say a traffic signal that's wanting to communicate that it's about to turn red. It's important to also note that AVs are not necessarily connected and CVs are not necessarily autonomous. What that means is, for example, a connected vehicle maybe receives that signal from it, or that information from a traffic signal, but maybe it's a prompt to the driver to then respond, as opposed to if it was autonomous, the vehicle's computer is the one doing the responding. And so on that note, even though these two technologies are being developed separately, we do anticipate that at some point, both aspects, autonomous and connected vehicle technology, will be incorporated into vehicles at some point in the future, just because there is some efficiencies there, no longer having to rely on a human to respond, but also receiving the benefits of that connections and information being shared directly to the vehicles themselves. So a big question that we get often asked is when? When are these vehicles going to be here? And on the screen here are a few headlines just from the last six to nine months. Here in this region, just earlier this spring semester, there was the Ollie Autonomous Shuttle that was operating on Sac State's campus. There's also the Phantom Autopilot test program that was going on in Sacramento. And then Waymo is actually Google's autonomous vehicle or AV service. And just last December, they started running their service in Phoenix to a small test group out there in Arizona. So there's, it's been in the headlines that, you know, this technology is starting to hit the streets. At the same time, there's also been some renewed skepticism about this technology. So Waymo, that same Google arm that's focused on AV technology, their CEO has come on record in saying that level five, that fully autonomous vehicle, may never happen. And these two headlines from the New York Times were actually just taken from last week. And they seem to indicate that maybe those initial projections by some of the automakers like Ford and Chevy that were going to have these AVs on the road here in the next couple of years, maybe that was a little bit optimistic. So with that in mind, we've consulted with some experts and others in the field to get an idea for what does that, what does that leave us? And what it leaves us is it's fairly uncertain, but there's this pretty wide range in which we anticipate AVs and CVs to be on the road. While, as you're seeing through those headlines, obviously they're testing, they're coming out, so maybe within the next couple of years, you start to see them on the streets. But how quickly will they get adopted? And that's going to be influenced by a number of factors. The Waymo headline seems to indicate that there's some technological hurdles that still need to get overcome before they can really be confident that this technology is going to get fully adopted. And then there's also things like personal preference. You know, how will people react when they're not in control of driving their own vehicle? And will they be comfortable even getting into like an Uber or a Lyft that has no driver in it either? Not to mention liability concerns, if there's collisions, or just costs that may be associated with it as well. So what are some of the effects that we can anticipate with AVs and CVs? So some of the benefits that really part of the reason why this technology is getting developed, for example, improved safety. You may have seen, you know, advertisements of cars being able to detect collisions before the driver can. So safety obviously is one huge benefit. Obviously, there's a lot of traffic congestion on the road. People, there's studies about the stresses that people experience in their daily commutes. If you're no longer having to pay attention to the road and you can do other things with that time, that could potentially reduce traffic stress. Traffic flow with the vehicles connected and speaking to one another, there could be efficiencies there, as well as potential increased access to vehicles for those that can't drive currently. So whether that be elderly, disabled, or young people that don't have their licenses with autonomous vehicles, if they don't need to know how to drive, they now have access to those. What that means though is that the side effect of that could be increased auto use and vehicle use. We could see an increase in vehicle miles traveled or even an increase in congestion just because there's more people now being able to travel by car.
Can I interrupt you for a second on that?
Sure.
So has there been any analyzation if, basically if you can go in there and go to sleep and end up in Las Vegas in your car rather than taking a flight, is there thought, is that part of the thought process of more miles used because there's a much more efficient way to potentially do it?
We have seen like people talking about- We have seen, like, people talking about essentially autonomous RVs, almost to a certain extent, where you essentially just, to your point, you're in a vehicle that starts where you, you know, at your home, almost kind of like an overnight Greyhound, and you get to your destination without any particular driver. Again, it's, you know, you're starting to put that trust in that technology, and so it's a question of, the technology's definitely developing. The question is, can all these factors sort of be checked off the boxes? And how quickly can we get to that point where that's viable? So still kind of actually an open question, even as our research is going through. Obviously, there's quite a wide range of opinions when it comes to that, but that's one potential implication. Switching gears a little bit to what are some of the effects that they could have on our built environment, some land use and transportation planning thoughts? If this facilitates a shift where people are now able to use mobility services like Uber and Lyft because they're, they've become much more cost competitive because drivers are often one of their higher costs, if you eliminate the driver, that those can become cost competitive to private ownership. That could mean reduced parking demand, which also could also mean increased uses of pickup and drop-off activity. So maybe in shopping centers where you have also this reduced parking demand, you convert some areas to where it's, the people, where people get picked up and dropped off. Also, if people are willing, more willing to sit in traffic for an hour because they've got the ability to do other things while they're in their cars, that could increase the demand for development in the suburbs, make it more attractive for people to live further from where they work. There's also the potential, because these vehicles will be able to get, you know, real-time traffic information, they can optimize their travel routes, there's the possibility that the, without any sort of other regulatory environment constraints, that these vehicles could use neighborhood cut-throughs more frequently. So it's another factor to consider. Also, with the increased access to vehicles, particularly with those populations that are currently dependent on transit, if they're now able to use autonomous vehicles, they, you could see a decrease in transit ridership. So shifting over to our recommendations, wanted to highlight just a few of the key takeaways in particular. AVs and CVs right now are being developed so that they can operate on the roads today to detect their environment and operate there. What that means is that the city could literally do nothing. They don't have, you don't have to do any sort of special infrastructure to prepare for these vehicles necessarily, and the AVs and CVs would be able to operate all right. That said, there are still some smart investments, some infrastructure investments and policy responses that the city definitely can consider. Particularly, you want to look at resiliency. You know, what things can you do that are beneficial in the short term but also have some useful life in the long term? And so we'll touch upon a few of those next. So first, I'll start by talking a little bit about the planning side recommendations. One of the recommendations that we've seen in the literature is to start planning now. We know that the technology is on the horizon, and I think this is actually a step in the right direction that Elk Grove is doing here. Actually, this is one of the very first plans of its type that we're aware of. In our research, we found a few that were done in larger cities like LA and Seattle, but they're very high policy level at this point. This is actually the first of its kind that we can tell that is more pragmatic in terms of what sort of infrastructure things should we be doing to help prepare for that. Stakeholder community engagement. So being able to have public workshops or being able to engage your stakeholders early on and say, educate them about what's going on with this technology and how the city is planning to respond to it. And honestly, a lot of the regulatory environment regarding vehicles in general comes from the federal and state government. And so to the extent that that affects the local government, partnering with your other local agencies or becoming part of, and advocating or lobbying the state and federal governments, that way you have that ability to mitigate some of those effects could also be important in the near term. In the longer term, especially as travel patterns start to change, it could look at things like restructuring transit. So the photo here is actually of an autonomous transit vehicle. So rather than the larger buses, these are smaller vehicles that maybe can get people that are going to common origins and destinations. And potentially also looking at, in the longer term, adjusting your parking requirements if there really is that reduction in parking demand. With that, I'm actually going to turn it over to my colleague, Josh Peterman. Josh is a principal at Farr and Pierce and specializes in our engineering team with autonomous technology.
So Rob? Rob discussed some short-term and long-term strategies for planning. I'm going to do the same for infrastructure. From a short-term perspective, there are strategies that the city could entertain to prepare for AVs and CVs, but that could also have benefits short-term, and I'll just name a couple. One, for instance, is asset management. Autonomous vehicles, of course, have sensors that pay, that rely on striping and signage and what traffic signals are doing. So to the extent that the city can maintain an inventory of those items that are in good repair and be able to direct their investments accordingly to keep them in good repair, would be a good idea in the long term for AVs. And in terms of connected vehicles, connected vehicles tend to need more network and electronic infrastructure, so radios, that sort of thing. And of course, an asset management system could take care of that as well. But in the near term, today, asset management systems have the same, same benefit. So you, today, you have signs and striping and streetlights and traffic signal poles that I'm sure it would be good for city staff to have an idea of what is in good and not-so-good repair so you can direct your investments accordingly. Similarly, network infrastructure. So in the future, connected vehicles, they say that they're going to be broadcasting gigabits of data per second, and a lot of that could be used by city staff in terms of travel behavior and whatnot. So you need a good, robust, reliable network to handle the information. But again, today, you could use a robust and reliable network as well to manage the traffic signal system that you have. From the, from a long-term, sorry, I wasn't paying attention. How do I advance the slide? Like that. Okay. From a long-term perspective, you know, you can, you can think of it like, as we get more autonomous and connected vehicles, you'll be relying less and less on information from humans as to what your traffic signal system or your, your transportation system is doing, and relying more and more on data and sensors. So the extent to which the city can start piloting those sorts of technologies and understanding what the data looks like, how much of it is, what kind of staffing you need to, to manage it, would really prepare the city in the long term for, you know, when those technologies come, and they'll know, they'll know what to expect. So that's sort of a long-term preparation for that. Exploring through technology pilots like smart traffic signal, you already have smart traffic signals, smart street lighting, connected vehicle pilots, like your, some of the neighboring agencies are doing, et cetera. So I think... I'm turning this back to you. Sorry.
All right. Well, with that, that concludes our presentation, and we'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions? Customer?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thanks, Rob and Josh, for this very informative presentation. Couple of questions. You know, in terms of autonomous versus connected, I feel like, based upon, you know, a couple of headlines you mentioned, it seems more likely that we're headed more towards connected vehicles that seems easier to implement. Would you agree with that?
Well, I'd say that the, I mean, both of them, like I said, are kind of progressing in parallel. And so you, like with the, for example, the Waymo service, that's an autonomous vehicle that's essentially about a level four. I mean, you still have a, a safety driver there, but the vehicle is essentially driving itself. It's making turns, it's detecting its environment as it's walking, if it's driving around the cities there in Arizona. So in some senses, it's already there. Connected vehicle technology, I think Josh probably has a little bit more background when it comes to the connected vehicle piece of it.
I think you can describe it as, the autonomous vehicle manufacturers are designing their vehicles to not require any connection to the outside environment because they're trying to sell these vehicles to fleets and whatnot. But they all have realized that their vehicles are better when connected, as opposed to not connected, so that they get information from traffic signals as to what phase is coming next, get information from crosswalks, when is there a pedestrian, when is there not, same for cyclists or transit or that sort of thing. So everybody is now realizing that autonomous vehicles are better when they have a connection to the environment. They're still proceeding on sort of separate, separate paths. There are people developing the connected vehicle technology and still people developing autonomous technology, but they, they will eventually merge into what we'll call a connected autonomous vehicle.
Oh, okay. Well, then, the follow-up with that, 5G, is that what they're all going to rely on? Is what we hear, or?
If I knew the answer to that, I'd be a, I'd be a rich man. There are, there are different ways for vehicles and pedestrians and elements of the transportation system to communicate with each other wirelessly. There's a dedicated short-range communication technology that was developed by Department of Transportation, and then there are other folks, as you said, that are developing 5G. It's the same bandwidth, it's just how they communicate and who is developing it that's different. So the, the one developed by the DOT has been around a long time, but not many people are using it. 5G has, is brand-new, but it has a lot of organic demand. So I'm not going to put myself in which camp.
But same bandwidth, both of them, you're saying?
It's the, it's the same frequency band. Yep.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
You know, it's a fascinating topic and one that I think is going to become reality, maybe not in the near, near future, but certainly, as you saw in the projected timeline, by 2040, it's going to be serious. And in fact, when I was back in DC at the DOT, they were saying that within the financier market, the underwriting of long-term bonds for airport parking structures is seeing a real nervous situation right now because they're anticipating that at some point, your car will drive you to the airport and you will send it back home and then program it, or, you know, call it to come pick you up when you land, and you won't need to park at the airport. Conversely, and I think this kind of goes to why it'll be necessary to have the vehicles connected, is they also envision parking revenue within cities to go downtown because rather than going and parking your car while you go in to watch a, a show or, or go out to eat, you'll just program the car to take a series of right-hand turns and keep looping the block until such time that you're done, and that still causes congestion. And so to have those cars connected to where you can program the car, go to the least congested area to, to drive, you know, or something along those lines. So I think it's, it's good that we're at least anticipating that and starting to see what sort of infrastructure we would need within the city to be prepared.
Indeed.
Thank you.
I'll open for public comment?
I will open it for public comment. I do not have anybody signed up to speak. Is there anyone else that would like to opine on autonomous and/or connected vehicles? Seeing nobody, I'll go ahead and close public comment, and I don't believe we need any direction at this point.
We got one more.
Okay, go ahead.
So, so one of, one of the things that, sorry, I didn't know you guys were, I thought there'd be some public comment, but, so one of the things, even to expand a little bit more what Vice, my Vice Mayor said, I mean, I've even heard of it even to the stretch where you wouldn't even have a garage at your house, you won't own a car because cars are parked 90% of the time. So basically, you would just have, it would be more like an Uber. You, you call for a car, and you get whatever, the next car that's the closest one, comes by, drops you off, it grabs somebody else nearby, and it, and it just keeps, just keeps cycling. So it would, could be a change in the, the whole streetscape, the residential homes, parking structures, as you mentioned. I mean, it, it, it could evolve over time to be, I mean, almost like space age is what we, compared to what we have now.
Yeah. That's, you know, Vice Mayor's comments, you know, about sending the car back, whether you're at a game or theater or something. I mean, at Seco, that's, that's one of the things we talk about and why we promote transit because of that, that very thing, you know, just because it's an autonomous vehicle, that doesn't relieve your, your traffic problem. I just wanted to go to the recommendations and get some consensus from my colleagues if they would agree, but there's a few recommendations in here that Farr and Pierce is recommending, and the relatively low cost, I mean, one is, is basically doing what we're already doing, which is expanding on the existing fiber optic network. I mean, I think that's something that we've been, we've been moving towards anyway as, as, as funding allows. And then, you know, trying to upgrade technology as it becomes available, and then the, the striping is probably the, the most costly one, but I thought, well, this is something we can phase over time, and we got a lot, we got a lot of time, it looks like, from, from when these things will be commonplace, and we can, you know, phase, phase in this six-inch striping. So wanted to get your thoughts on that.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I think anything that we are overlapping, especially, so with the fiber optics, we can take all the other technology, we can, it can support public works, transportation, the police department, you know, all those kind of things. I think, you know, to do individual installations in anticipation of the future, I wouldn't support that, but I would support anything that we do. One of the things I've mentioned is, when there's projects going through, even if we're not going to put fiber optics somewhere, is we ought to put in the conduit, put in the substructures, so at least we don't have to come back and retrench through there. We just, you know, maybe don't even cut in the boxes. You cut in the boxes at a later date, pull your cable in and go. But at least if you got the conduits in, when you've got a, a street opened up, you're way ahead of the game. And even like with utility facilities, when there's idle facilities, sometimes other companies come in and buy rental space in those vacant conduits. So there's always that opportunity in the future, too.
Yeah. Does that give enough direction there? Okay, thanks.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order? Your standard adjournment is 8:52.